Good evening. Good evening. Today is July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, it's seven o'clock. Our thought for today is most people do not listen with the intent to understand, they listen with the intent to reply. That's Stephen Covey. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this a meeting to order tonight. We do have with us tonight a special guest, pastor here tonight, who is new to the community. The pastor of Sims Chapel Baptist Church, Pastor Quint- Quint- Quinton Bryant. Sir, if you would, please come on up for us. I want to welcome you here tonight, welcome you to the community. You already taken off with a bang, I'm seeing the things that you guys are doing on Facebook, and we're proud of your leadership. If you would, tell us a little bit about yourself and a little bit about your ministry, and pray for our community, please.
Yes, sir, absolutely. My name again is Pastor Quinton Bryant. I'm a native of Albany, Georgia. I recently relocated to the Newton County area back in February, and so far it's been a wonderful thing. God is doing great things in the community through Sims Chapel, and so we are excited to see what God is getting ready to take us. We've been blessed to have over twenty to join in the last few months, and so we're just thankful for the open doors and the new opportunities that we've been given.
Amen, amen. Yeah, so if you would pray for us, and you know, we do understand and recognize that Sims Chapel has always been a community church and opening doors to everyone. So if you would pray for our community, and after you do that, please lead us in our pledge.
Absolutely. Shall we pray? Our God and our Father is in Jesus' name, we want to pause to say thank you. Thank you for waking us up early this morning and starting us on our way. God, thank you for protecting us as we go, have went throughout our day, and God allowing no hurt, harm, or danger to come against us. Now, God, as we gathered in this meeting, now, God, we pray a Songs one thirty-three, says, behold, how good and how pleasant it is for brothering to do well together in unity. God, we thank you that Newton County will be unified, we thank you to God that we are coming together, to God, to do what you've called us to do. Thank you for what you're doing in this city, thank you for every leader, thank you for every, oh, God, person that represents this city. God, we thank you for the great things that you are generated to do in this city and for this city. God, we thank you for blessings, miracles, and answers. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Amen. May we please stand for the pledge? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the ninety states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I do have a token of appreciation for you, sir. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for the work that you're gonna do and lead us to your brighter community. Thank you. God bless you, sir. God bless you, thank you. Now, here's a need to amend the agenda tonight. Time sensitive. We want to add to the agenda eleven A. Ascensions, Ascensions Program Management, Mr. Jeff Prime, a task order for the R. Real Cousins School property. Eleven B, a task order for the Newton County Admin Building. I seek a motion that we approve the agenda with those changes, please. Thank you, sir. Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passed four oh, thank you so much. Our next is citizen comments. This is a time we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You may have, you may come at this time, you have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good evening, Archer Shepherd. Mr. Shepherd, correct me if I'm wrong, did you say the purpose of your address was, you know, what district you was in or what?
No, sir.
Okay, I thought that's what you said. Anyway. Nine one six nine, Vittis Drive, Covington. I'm here to discuss the report from the county manager. Hopefully, these items is on the agenda.
No, sir. If we're discussing items that are on the agenda tonight.
I hadn't told you what the item were.
If it, what number are you discussing?
Seven. I noticed that we hadn't renewed the contract for the attorney. I don't know whether that's.
Sir, no, sir, that's not on the agenda tonight.
Okay, the other one is. The Newton County Senior Home Repair. They would like for you to, y'all, to extend the time because they hadn't, don't have enough time to get this stuff together, so I'm hoping that would be on the agenda tonight.
Sir, that's not on the agenda tonight.
Okay, well.
It is.
I pray that it be on there.
You gave out your report, sir? Go ahead, sir.
They don't have enough time to get this stuff together. They hadn't got, got some of their answers back, they don't know whether they've been approved or whatnot, so it's a short time for them to get this stuff together, and I think it's expounded thirty-first of this month, if I'm correct. So they would like to get an extension on this. That's one of the items. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to make comments about agenda topics only?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosie Crawford.
Good evening.
And I'm a citizen of Covington, Georgia, ninety-two eighty-two West View Drive. My concern is similar to what Mr. Shepherd has just expressed, and I have people that has given me a call, and one of the complaints is that they can't get a person to come out and do the appraisals. The ones that are coming are charging a high amount just to come to give them an appraisal. The second thing is, is that in addition to that, is that they are being told what they can and cannot do to improve their home. I was under the impression that if they qualified and gave you everything that was asked, they should be able to get someone to do the work at their choosing, as long as they was licensed and had insurance. So with that being said, it seems to me it's a lot of controlling is going on as to what these people can do and not do once they apply for these funds. So I would suggest that we would get a better understanding of why they have to get what the city or the county is recommending. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Thank you. Citizen comments is closed. Next on the agenda is the chairman's report. I'm gonna give my time for the county manager's report. Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so I come to you all today with the county manager's report, July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and I want to thank the citizens for their concerns, and we're gonna speak specifically to those issues that related to ARPA and some other issues. Again, I'm eleven weeks into this role, and we've adopted the mantra, the three P approach, people, purposes, and process. The purpose is what we're gonna focus on today, and the purpose is optimal service liv- delivery for our citizens. Working in collaboration with our parametrics and hearing the concerns of this board as it relates to ARPA and the funding that we wanted allocated to various programs, I want to talk about five programs in particular. The Emergency Rental Assistance Program, the Nonprofit Assistance Grant Program, the Low Income Senior Home Repair Program, the Youth Commission, and Small Business Relief Grant Program. Let's talk about ERAP. As you all know, we went through some tumultuous times as it relates to COVID nineteen, especially households, and in particular, the risk that was associated with people being out of work so on and so forth was homelessness and the inability to pay bills. So as a result, I want to applaud this board for looking at this program and suggesting this as one of the programs that we should move forward with. Here is a snapshot of the services we've rendered thus far. When you look at the total number of applicants, we've had one thousand and thirty-nine applicants. We've approved two hundred and fifteen citizens as it relates to ERAP funding, and we've had allocated by this board a little over one point two million. As a result, in terms of disbursements, we've dispersed a little over a million dollars in relationship to rental, utility, and mortgage assistance. The Nonprofit Grant Assistance Program, another program in relationship to our nonprofit businesses suffering due to COVID nineteen. These programs encompasses a wide range of nonprofit of programming associated with youth engagement, food pantry, so on and so forth. When you look at the total number of applicants as of July eleventh, we've had forty. We've approved forty programs in relationship to this program. The allocated funding is three point one million. We've already dispersed a little bit over, just under one point two million, with one million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand dispersed in funding. The Low Income Senior Home Repair, was some of the concern citizens just raised. As you know, we embarked on this June first, and there have been some ebbs and flows, some highs and lows with it, but I think when you look at it in its totality, it's been successful nonetheless. When you look at the total number of seniors who have registered, who've initiated the process, that's eight hundred and fifty-five seniors. What's unique about that number, we've had in-person dialogue and contact with seven hundred and fifty of those seniors. That makes up eighty-eight percent of those totally, total registered. Total applications completed, two hundred and fifty-three. We've had a total of twenty-eight approvals, and the total monies awarded for repairs right now is at four hundred and eight thousand dollars. Small Business Relief Grant Program, initiated July tenth. The Board of Commissioners allocated one million dollars in funding for this. Eligible small businesses may receive up to twenty thousand dollars. The application is available on our website and also via the QR code below on this slide. As of July eleventh, we had two small businesses that have applied for the grant that's currently under review. The Youth Commission, I want to thank this board for identifying the bright young talent in this community as it relates to our youth who we're gonna embark on the Youth Commission Board. This is gonna be a civic engagement opportunity for these youth, and we're excited about it. The students were notified by official letter via email correspondence on July seventeenth, via an acceptance letter, and their first orientation meeting will be held Monday, July twenty-fourth. Let's look at these programs at a glance, a snapshot, if you will. When you look at the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, the total impact, two hundred and fifteen lives or families have been impacted by this, we've distributed a little bit over one point two million dollars. When you look at the Nonprofit Assistance Program, at least twenty-four programs of that nature have been impacted. Well, we've dispersed one point one six million dollars. When you look at the local income, Low Income Senior Home Repair, we had twenty-eight approvals thus far, and we've awarded four hundred and eight thousand dollars in relationship to repairs being rendered. Small Business Relief Program, as I stated earlier, was launched July tenth, so it's still a work in progress. But when you look at the total impact, I want this community to look at it from a lens of citizens, individuals, businesses, so on and so forth. We've impacted two hundred and sixty-seven entities in Newton County, and we've attributed two point eight million dollars to right the wrongs that they have been subjected to as a COVID nineteen. So I think that is a positive in itself, and we still have a ways to go. Internally, I'm proud of this program. It's kind of a see, click, fix initiative called Notify Newt. This is a program that we launched on May twenty-fourth, and as of July thirteenth, there have been a total of a hundred and four requests in the categories that range from illegal dumping to tree debris. Our most common requests are road maintenance issues and illegal dumping. Out of the hundred and four requests that we received as a result of Notify Newt, all hundred and four of those requests have been closed within a one week of receipt. So you talk about optimal service delivery being our second P, being purpose, we're answering the call as a relationship to that. When you look at the numbers by district, on average, the average number of requests by district is at twenty point eight, just under twenty-one per district. So this is a viable tool that we're using, and I'm pleased with the internal staff for the remarkable work they're doing. Chris Malcoms of the world, the Brian Fazio's of the world, the Chester Craig's of the world, our chief Connors and the fire safety folks of the world. Everybody's rolling up their sleeves, doing what they need to do to take care of our greatest asset, the people. Now, to talk about the real logistics of ARPA, and in specific, some of these programs, I'm honored that we have Esquire Kennedy Shannon here today to talk specifically about some of the programs and the concerns and the questions related to said programs, and also to talk about other initiatives that we have forthcoming. Attorney, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so as County Manager Cooper said, my job is to answer some questions that you all may have. I'm also gonna address some of the concerns that I heard from the community as it relates to senior home repair. I'm gonna give you an update on all of the programs, as well as provide some documents for you all to review. So before we start, because I'm gonna reference some of these documents, I want to pass them out to each of you. Yeah, you do it, okay. Okay, so first and foremost, I need to do a record correction. When I came before the board, there was a discussion of qualified census tracts. And I informed District Three and District Four, the majority of the qualified dis- qualified, I'm sorry, QCTs resided in District Three and District Four. That was not correct. In fact, the qualified census tracts are in District Two, Four, and Five. There are no qualified census tracts in Three. I confused District Two with District Three when I spoke before about QCTs. So you all are gonna get a map that looks like this, that will show you the districts where there are qualified census tracts. So what we did was, our team laid on top of the map that's provided by HUD that shows the qualified census tracts. We laid on top of that Newton County, and that's how we were able to see how the QCTs cut across each district. So I wanted to correct that record first and foremost, that in fact, the QCTs are Two, Four, and Five. Yes.
Can you explain to what census tracts mean? Mr. Chairman, may I ask this question to her before she moves on in regards to census tracts? Thank you so much. Can you explain what the census tracts mean? Is that that underserved and so forth? Explain that in detail.
So qualified census tracts are a term that is in the final rule for ARPA through the Department of Treasury. It, it had, they were calculated based on census tracts through the U.S. Census Bureau by HUD. And these census tracts represent communities that are low-income communities within your community. There is a presumption of eligibility if somebody resides in a qualified census tract. They don't have to show that they're eligible for these programs just by a nature of living in that QCT. They are presumed eligible for all of the programs that are offered for ARPA because ARPA has a focus on individuals that are low to moderately income, but with a particular focus on those that are low income. So when you look at the way it breaks down, District Four has predominantly eighty percent of the qualified census tracts. And when we look at the programming that we've done to date, eighty percent of the applicants that have come from a QCT have come from District Four.
Right.
Yeah, so that's pretty much what the qualified census tract.
What is the salary range you're looking at in regards to census tract when you're saying poverty?
So we don't even, we don't even do that. That's already kind of calculated. There's a tool that the Department of Treasury provides. You literally type in the address, and it'll tell you if it's in a qualified census tract. Or you type in the county, and it'll show you a map of the county like this, and then the red areas identified on the map are what HUD and the Department of Treasury define as qualified census tracts.
What did you use a year ago when you said it was Three and Four?
No, when I told you was Three and Four, I confused Two. When I looked at the map, I thought your district was Two and not Three.
No, it's never.
And, and I, and that's why I want to correct the record. And the reason this even came to pass is because I asked our team to put together this map so that I could share with you, because there was a question about the use of vans, right? And whether or not they could only be used by districts with qualified census tracts. So I wanted to make sure we weren't missing any districts with qualified census tracts. So when you lay this map over the qualified census tract map, then that's when it became apparent that District Three doesn't have any. It's predominantly Two, Four, and Five, and mainly Four. Yeah, so I don't know, you know, I know your community, but you all know your community better than anybody. I think when, when I mentioned Four, you shook your head yes, as if that wasn't a surprise. I think when, when I mentioned Four, you shook your head yes, as if that wasn't a surprise that predominantly most of the qualified census tracts lie in District Four. So I don't think that comes to a surprise for anybody. But I just wanted to correct the record first and foremost to say, I misspoke before when I said Three and Four. It was predominantly Two and Four, and there's a little spillover into, um, Five as well. Any other questions on that before I get, okay?
Commissioner, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. C. First of all, I would just want everybody to forgive me for being a little late. I am a father slash granddad slash sometimes I be late 'cause I run around a whole lot of meetings. Uh, my question that I have, it, it is that I think a while back I had, uh, requested, is there, do we, is in this information, is there a list of, I don't know where you get it, addresses or whoever been served, whether, uh, whether it happened with rent, whether it's home repair or what's up? Is there a, a list, maybe not necessarily name, so we would know who's getting maybe what?
Gotcha. So if you look at the document that I passed out that looks like this, this is the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. I can't divulge addresses, 'cause that's personal information, but each of these dots on this map represents a household that was served through the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. So if you look, um, Commissioner, you had, um, ninety addresses in your, in your district that applied. Of those ninety, seventy-one were from a qualified census tract, and they got preference. So you had the most number of QCT applicants as it relates to ERAP, and you had the most number of Emergency Rental Assistance applications that were approved by three times any other commissioner. So the need was clearly in District Four, and majority of the money went to District Four. Um, District One had thirty, the, um, households that were serviced. District Two had thirty-nine, twelve of which came from a qualified census tract. District Three had twenty-eight. Again, District Four had ninety, with seventy-one coming from a qualified census tract. And District Five had twenty-eight households with two coming from qualified census tracts. So, um, we couldn't give you the address, but we could at least plot on the map so you can see where the need was in the community and what districts had the most applicants.
Okay, and, and last, uh, guess question. In home repair, is, is there, right now, how many, uh, how many have, are we looking at?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to that, and I'm gonna give you an update on home repair.
Yeah, so also for the Executive Order thirteen nine nine five, I have the most minorities. That's what this, also the Department of Treasury also catered to as well for the ARPA funds. So how is that, that's the executive order from the President?
Right, there's a focus, but for ARPA, it's qualified census tract. Um, there's, there's, there is an issue of diversity. They want to make sure that, that, you know, that these particular resources are spread throughout the community in a diverse way. Uh, but when you have a community that is predominantly African-American, you, you meet that diversity checkbox pretty quickly, so.
That, that executive order went with ARPA. That's the reason why he put it in place, to make sure.
But there was no, there's no ARPA, there's no presumption of eligibility just because you're a minority. There is a presumption of eligibility if you are in a qualified census tract.
And the other thing you mentioned was in regards to the usage of the shuttles. As we know from the beginning, those shuttles were part of the project that I had. So we mentioned that from the beginning. And so when we came back, I asked for those shuttles to be put back on ARPA.
So I'm actually gonna discuss that?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so let me, let me get to my updates. So first, I just have a general updates regarding ARPA that I'm gonna go, and then I'm gonna go program by program. So the first one, um, and these are motions that I'm gonna ask of you based on feedback and meetings with County Manager and Patrick. Um, so the first one is, I'm gonna request that the board entertain and pass hopefully a motion that will allow the County Manager to make operational decisions as it relates to the ARPA programs. This authorization is necessary to avoid any procedural delays in any program implementation and will enable efficient program delivery. One of the reasons the senior home repair doesn't have more applicants approved right now is because we're kinda stuck. There's some decisions that I need you all to make today that until I get before the board and ask you to make this decision, it stops the program code, because we can't make any decisions until I come before you and you vote to either allow or disallow those decisions. Having to do that, depending on when a board meeting is, stops the program code in its tracks. And we won't be able to make any approvals or denials, because there is an open question that has to come before this board to make a decision. If we're able to go to the County Manager and get an answer for that, then that's a matter of a phone call to say yea or nay, and the program can continue moving without having to come back before the board as a whole. Um, you all want to put parameters on that, that's your discretion. Um, but having at least some autonomy to come to the County Manager to say, "Look, Mr. Manager, we've got this issue, this is what we recommend, can we go in that direction, yes or no?" Without it being, well, you've gotta take it to the next board meeting, which is in three weeks, and now we have to pause programming to come before the board, which is currently the case right now with senior home repair. That's why the number of approvals are so low, 'cause there's things I need to get approval from you all today on. Once I do that, you'll see those numbers start clicking up, because right now we're in a pause until you all make this decision. So I'm asking, uh, that a motion be entertained to that effect, to where I can go to County, um, Manager Harold and get that information as opposed to coming before the board as a whole. So that's the first one. I don't know if you want to address these as I go, 'cause there's quite a few.
Sorry, I apologize, we do, but, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring you back up.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna move into zoning.
Okay.
And then we're gonna come back up.
Okay, cool.
I'm gonna deal with that. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, ma'am, please come on up. How you doing this evening?
I'm fine, thank you, Chairman.
You doing okay?
Yes.
Thank you, I was trying to wait till seven-thirty, it's seven-thirty, so, yeah.
You ready?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, good evening, Chairman and Board. Our, our first petition for this evening is a rezoning case. Case number is REZ twenty-three dash zero 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 ten. The existing land use map is commercial, it was recently approved by the board. It's currently zoned R-three single-family, and they are proposing to go to Highway Commercial zoning. It is located in the Yellow River watershed, and the current address is twenty-nine-four Highway eighty-one. And then Highway eighty-one, it's two parcels we're looking at. Tax ID or the map and parcel number is zero zero four five dash zero six zero and zero zero four five dash zero four nine A. And the parcel sizes are two point five acres and one acre respectively, located in District Four. And the owner, petitioner, and representative today is Maria Alves. Uh, just a brief history, the planning commission approved the flume in April twenty-fifth of this year, and the board approved the flume on May sixteenth of this year. And then on June twenty-seventh, the planning commission recommended approval for the rezoning to Highway Commercial. And this is the applicant's intent to rezone to Highway Commercial to locate a special events facility on the property. And again, it's a total of three point five acres located on Highway eighty-one. And currently, there's a home on each of the parcels, as well as a church that sits at the front of the larger parcel, or an old church building. So staff received the application and the packet and plans on February twenty-third. And in terms of land use density, they're proposing to use it for a special events facility, and they're asking to rezone it to Highway Commercial. The current flume is commercial as it is. And given the existing zoning and development in the area, the proposed zoning may be appropriate for the area. The owner has provided a preliminary site plan that meets the minimum requirements for a special events facility, such as the appropriate buffers, setbacks, and parking. And the plan has already received preliminary approval from GDOT for access off of Highway eighty-one. And in conclusion, given the designation of the future land use of commercial, staff is of the opinion that the rezoning to Highway Commercial may be appropriate for a special events facility. And recommended conditions, so should the petition be recommended for approval by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved to Highway Commercial, conditional, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. And one, to the owner's agreement to the following, A, comply with all Newton County fire codes. B, receptions and other activities shall be held indoors. Uh, C, no fireworks are allowed for any special event. D, applicant must show compliance with all required setbacks and buffers prior to the issuance of any kind of a business license. E, fire marshal shall set the guest limit for the event facility, the seating. And F, the applicant shall obtain a conditional use permit prior to a business license being issued for the special events facility. G, existing homes on the property shall be converted into quarters for the special events. H, the owner shall meet all requirements of Newton County ordinances prior to the permits being issued. I, the owner applicant shall obtain approvals from Development Services, Public Works, Fire Marshal, and external agencies such as GDOT, Newton County Water and Sew Authority, GSWCC, um, prior to any permits being issued. And J, they have to complete a minor plan to combine the two properties into one for the commercial use. So this is the parcel in question, it's, uh, two parcels actually. So there's one home here, one over here, and then you've got the church that sits closer to the road or the church building. Um, it's currently zoned, single-family residential, R-three. And these are the two parcels up here, it's close to commercial zoning as well, next adjacent and opposite it. This was recently changed to commercial when the board approved it, uh, back in May. But this is the future land use map, so that will be updated shortly on the Qpublic website. And of course, it's in the Yellow River. And this is the survey that was submitted by the applicant, showing what's currently there on the ground. And this is a concept plan of the proposed layout for, this is for the building that used to be the church. This is what they're proposing for the special events facility layout. And this is the other part of the floor plan. And this is just, um, pointing out where everything is. They're gonna propose to put parking in front here. This is the existing, um, church that's now being used, and the two homes. And these are just ground pictures of it, so there's a house on the left as well as the right. This is the one on the left, it's set back off the road behind the church building. Then you've got the church here, this is the house on the right-hand side, which is down this driveway here. And these are just, um, buildings of the site together. This is the parking area in front here, and just the two homes in the building. And if there are any questions for staff, if not, the applicant is present, and this is a public hearing.
Thank you. We're gonna, I'm gonna open it up now.
Okay.
We're gonna open up the pub, the public hearing now. Um, the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight, you have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please come and state your name, your address for the record, please. You may come at this time. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight, you have ten minutes to do so. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight, you may come at this time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Alves. I'm here for the change of the zoning, uh, for special events. I don't know if you have any questions for me?
If you'd like to make any comments you, you want, you would like to make, you can make them at this time.
I think I'm okay. Just wanted to know if you have any questions for me at this time?
Thank you, thank you so much.
That's good.
We're gonna open it up for the public hearing, so you can ask, make any statement you would like at this time.
I think I'm okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else would like to make, um, comments in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to make comments in favor tonight? Anyone would like to make comments in favor tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Anyone wants to oppose tonight? Would anyone like to oppose tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on up. Commissioner Henderson, um, this is in your district. We want to get a motion on the floor, so we can get discussion going.
Well, well, first I had a comment, that's the reason why I raised me up just a little bit earlier. And I wanted to ask the young lady who came up here to it, and I, and I noticed there's no opposition. And I know the area pretty good. The question I asked, was there any communication between, uh, putting the event, uh, building behind the church with the people who act, who are a part of the church? And I was, I was wanting to know, if you want to ask a little bit about that, please, sir. Unless it's, there's no reason I can't answer that question.
Yeah, uh, why don't you get a motion on the floor, and then we can ask Ms. Applewhite as part of our discussion?
I think, I think the reason why I was asked that particular, wanted to ask that question, that would give me an idea of what motion I might want to put on the floor. And, and I don't think there's too much to ask someone, and you come in, you, you come into the community, and you want to put, do a event that, say, for example, they may be having church, and then you want to have a part to break down Booger Wicker Party. And the people at church might say, "Well, hey, we, we don't want to Booger Wicker Party at the same time we're having church." So that was all I asked, and I don't think there was too much to ask. Unless there's a, um, legal reason, um, Mr. Patrick, that I can answer, ask that question.
Yeah, well, your rules contemplate, um, discussion after a motion is made. I mean, that's, that's the way your, your rules have been set up. I, I would suggest, Ms. Applewhite, tell me if I'm wrong, the property, there are signs posted on the property. Would it have been on both of those parcels prior to the meeting?
Yes.
So the church would have been able to see the, the signs posted, and if they had a question, they could have either approached us or the applicant.
My understanding from the applicant is that the building will be used for special events, yeah.
The building is, it's, it's not a church anymore.
I don't think it's a church anymore, it's not, yeah.
The building is the special events.
Maybe it's something I, I probably need to know, but as I pass by, in my travels, you know, I just see the building look like a church. And so maybe if I would have asked that question, uh, she, uh, hopefully she would have told me, so, uh, JC, that, uh, there's no church no longer, so.
So we're gonna ask for a motion to hit the floor.
Well, I have a question, Ms. Applewhite, for me.
If you can, you can make a, you can make a motion for the purpose of discussion.
Ms. Applewhite, the question, and the question that I'm asking her, since I, maybe it's the only person I asked a question to, is was there any conversation by the planning commissioners for us about that particular building? And, and, uh, especially the church building?
I'm sorry, if they asked the church owners?
So there's no church, there's just a vacant church building?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's correct, sir, um, and I think Ms. Alves has acquired the property already.
Okay.
According to the tax assessor's records.
Well, thank you. First of all, you know, since I've kinda got the answer, answer to the question, which I think she probably wouldn't have been, um, wouldn't have mind telling me herself personally, instead of going around and blocking up the curvy, I'd like to make the motion, um, to approve with the staff recommendations.
Is there a second, please? The motion by Commissioner Henderson is second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion, all in, any more, Commissioner Cowell?
Uh, is there anything in these conditions that says it can only be used for special events? 'Cause if you sell the property and transfer, it could be something else.
Um, it doesn't state specifically, or you're asking if there are any uses have been prohibited? It doesn't state that specifically?
Basically, it could only be limited to a special event facility.
You would like it to be limited to just a special events facility, sir?
I'm sorry.
Are you saying you would like it to be limited just to the special events? Um, we can put that condition in there, it's not there right now, but yes, we can.
Okay, then I, uh, I would ask Commissioner Henderson to amend his motion to include that. The reason being is you don't want a mechanic shop opening up out there or something like that.
Okay, so we can make that, okay?
Uh, so they've been saying I like to amend my motion to include that as well.
Okay.
The motion by Commissioner Henderson is second by, um, Commissioner Mason. Any discussion, all in favor? It passes five oh, thank you. Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, our second application, the owner of this property actually requested to withdraw it after we had already advertised it legally for the hearing, so we didn't have to, um, move forward with it with the planning commission. They, uh, granted the withdrawal, and it's just here before you, but it is CUP twenty-three dash zero 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 four, located in one third, uh, one-three-one-six-one Brumbridge Road. And it was a conditional use permit to allow an education center, like a special needs school, but the owner, um, has since, um, withdrawn his permission to have. but the owner has since withdrawn his permission to have the petition move forward. And that, that's, this motion is going to be forwarded today to grant that. We had to bring it forward because it was already legally advertised, so it's just, yeah. But it's being withdrawn.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the request to withdraw the application for CUP two-three dash zero 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 four, the conditional use permit.
Is there a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mrs. E. So if they wanted to do again, or somebody wanted to do it again, had to go through the process all over again?
Yes, sir, they'd have to reapply. That's correct.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes four, five oh. Thank you. Guys, also, we wanna remind everyone, when someone else is speaking, if you could, please turn your mics off, that's while the feedback is coming.
Okay, sure, so before, we have a resolution, it is consideration of text amendments to the Newton County zoning ordinance, which is codified in Appendix A zoning. And it's to amend procedures to ensure consistency with the zoning procedure law of the state of Georgia. So basically, the state has made changes to the zoning procedure laws, and all jurisdictions had to amend their ordinances accordingly. And this affected our Chapter Six of the Unified, of the Unified Development Ordinance. And so it's UDO AMD twenty-three dash zero zero two, and the ordinance or the resolution number is O zero seven one eight two zero two three. And the copy of the ordinance of the resolution, sorry, is in your packets today. Um, I also have the red line packet as part of the packet that you received, so I won't read through every single thing. But I would like to highlight some of the main changes that will affect us. So before, we had a minimum of fifteen days to advertise a case, fifteen days, but not more than forty-five days. That has now changed to thirty days, and so, you know, within thirty to forty-five days. So what that has an effect done is, um, before, when our zoning cases were normally heard at the second BOC meeting, it has now pushed it up to the first meeting, so it'll be within that forty-five day period of advertising. So in starting, and we had to enforce that starting July. So the cases from July, which will come to the board in August, will be heard at the first meeting in August, and not the second one. And that will be a significant change moving forward. And before, the zoning applications were submitted by the first Friday of any month, they still are, but they went to the following month, to the planning commission. Now, we have amended that to it going to the next available meeting. You know, to accommodate that thirty-day advertising period as well, just to give us some time for that. So those are the two main changes. Everything else, we already had pretty much, you know, ten days to appeal any case. That is still affecting, we've already been doing that. And again, if you have any questions in particular on any of the red text, that is what has been changed. I'm happy to answer that. And one, I do need to, at the planning commission, there is one change that I do need to make from there, um, is section D, uh, section six, part D, the authority to accept. Um, for the planning commission, we presented this as going to the county clerk, um, but in discussions with the county manager, we're gonna change that to going to the county manager's office. So this is notices of any appeals to decisions that were made, you know, by the board. Basically, legal cases, so it'll come through the county manager's office and then go through the usual route. So that's a change I made, I made from the planning commission meeting to here. Just to change D from county manager to, from the clerk, county clerk to the county manager, to get those notifications of legal cases and appeal cases for zoning cases.
Just to understand, why would it go from the person who's certified from the state to hold records to a staff member? I, I just want, I'm scared to know. Why, why the change?
For the, cause the county manager, how the, how our county is set up, the county manager is in charge. So that's why we recommended that it go through that office. And then, you know, it'll be dispersed illegal and wherever it has to go. This is just for zoning cases, this is not all legal cases. It's just pertaining to appeals to zoning decisions only, doesn't affect other departments.
Do you know the reason why the, when the original document was created, they formed it that way? Cause we've been a county manager government. So do you understand, do you know the reason why they put that in place that way from the beginning? Of why they wanted that process to go that way?
The county manager?
From the clerk to, from the, the originate, original document, where you say you switched?
This, are you just asking for, in relation to zoning cases, ma'am?
Well, maybe Patrick can answer that question, I might, that might be the answer.
I, I don't know why it was originally presented one way or the other. I think the idea that of, of this, it's only the person that accepts notice of an appeal. So the clerk will still be the person responsible for assembling records and transmitting records. It's just who receives the notice of the, of the appeal. It'll go to the manager, it then requires your zoning staff to work, so that workflow kinda flows from the manager down to your planning and zoning staff. I think that's the reason it's been made.
Yeah, that was my question, I wanted to know what was the specific reason for the change, and why it was written, the document was written the way it was from the beginning.
And, um, are there any other?
Yeah, yeah, it was.
Are there any other questions? Yeah, um, those are pretty much significant, those are the main changes that would come about as a result of this amendment.
Wanna open it up for the public hearing?
Yes, it is.
At this time, we're gonna open it up now for the public hearing. Anyone wanna speak in favor? You can come this time, you have ten minutes to do so. Uh, please state your name and address for the record, please. Anyone would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone would like to speak in favor tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. Um, you may come at this time, please state your name and address for the record, please. Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Anyone would like to oppose tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. Um, Ms. Appleway? Guys, I seek a motion, please.
Chairman, if I may, before you do that, um, sorry, I just need to mention one more thing. Um, another effect it's gonna have is if the board, for whatever reason, is going to table a case, it's no longer a thirty-day period, it'll be tabled for sixty days, cause we have to re-advertise it thirty days in advance. So I just wanted to let the board be aware of that. So it'll push, anything we table, it'll be pushed out sixty days now, instead of just thirty.
Okay. Um, Commissioners, I seek a motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, sir, can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Let me call, let me, let me call it. You wanna state your reason?
Uh, thank you, Mrs. E. You know, here lately, and it's just, this old man, JC Henderson, lately, we, uh, we've been giving our powers as an LA elected official away. We've been giving it to people who don't ha- have to come around and or send you a piece of mail. And I, you know, and maybe we just need a single, a single, uh, one-person board, who knows? And it might be, I mean, what the citizens of Newton County want. Maybe they don't wanna need a five-man commission. And so that's the only thing I'm saying is, is that we're steadily giving away powers, and then eventually we'll go back to this, uh, one-month thing, or to every two months have a board meeting, probably in the middle, in the middle of the day while you're working. And we'll continue to have a lot of people's out of town to conduct Newton County businesses. It's like, we don't have enough people right here in this beautiful county that I've been a part of my whole life, you know, do these particular jobs, but it's just old man's observations.
Thank you, it passed three one one, it's finished.
Uh, Chairman, let's bring this to the conclusion of our public hearings, but I do have one final item, it's a streetlight petition.
Go ahead.
Can I make? Yeah, this is a resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners to create a street lighting district for the meadows at River Trace Phase Two. Um, it is in your packet, we have the layout of, um, where the polls are gonna go, as Georgia power has provided, as well as a survey of the subdivision. And this is just another street light district that we're creating.
Thank you. Commissioners, let's take a motion, please. Let's take a motion, please.
So moved.
Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion?
Whose district?
Commissioner Henderson, go ahead now. What'd you say? I'm not sure, who's district is it in?
Oh, I don't have that with me, um, but it's not a public hearing, it's just a, a street light resolution. We're creating a tax, a street light district, cause the residents have requested to have streetlights in that section of the subdivision.
I think it's in District One.
Yeah, Phase One has lights, and Phase Two doesn't have their lights as yet, so that's what we're doing.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you, ma'am. I parametrics, wanna bring you back up.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So before I left, I had asked for a, a motion, um, just to put some, some more caveat around that. The decisions would not include any creation of any new programs, any allocation of any additional funding. It would only be to programs that you've already voted to create, programs that you've already voted to fund, um, that I would be able to go to the county manager. But if there's anything where there's a new program being created or funding allocated, that's clearly a function of this board, and that would not be something that the county manager would be able to do unilaterally.
Commissioners, I seek a motion, let's get a motion on the floor, so we can discuss it.
I had a question, I think for Ms. Kennedy, I stepped down, question, we raised, I think, I know I was raising my hand. And I, and I hope that I could ask my question, unless it's some reason why I can't, Patrick?
We just need to get a motion on the floor, so we can do discussion.
So moved.
Is there a second? So motion was to approve?
To make the operational decisions on Opera for senior repair programs as opposed to coming before the board each time for approval.
Commissioner Edwards, you second. Did you? It's a motion by Commissioner, um, Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Discussion, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mrs. E. The question that I have is just, I think there's other ways of achieving that particular objective. I mean, typically, they would get on the phone with somebody or email, and ask, is there a consensus as, as far as, you know, whether or not we wanna move in that direction? And I just, to me, and you know, and you know where I'm kinda headed, I think this, once again, I think this taken away from the citizens of Newton County, without giving the elected, the people who they elected, went to the polls and voted for uh, the opportunity to make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanders.
I'm in agreeance with Commissioner Henderson. It seems like recently, we're giving all of our power away, and all of a sudden, policies are being changed, especially when certain commissioners act certain things, we create policy. As Patrick actually told me before, this board is a reactive board, we create policy based on emotion. And so with this being said, is that in the beginning, when we started Opera, we said at all decisions, that was a vote from the board, you can go pull the recording, you can ask our clerk to pull it, all decisions for this funding goes for the board. One reason why, we have people going to jail for this, for Opera funding. We have people being locked up for Opera funding. We're under federal investigation. So we should have all of this going before us for transparency, so that we can dot our i's and cross our t's. So if it's going just before management and not coming before the board, if something occurs, that could've been a mistake, but of course, the federal government don't looks at it, look at it as a mistake. They say we should know. Then guess what, it's gonna fall back on the board of commissioners, because we should have known, we should have voted on it. Now, if this board wanna vote for that, I'm voting against it, because I'm gonna dot my i's and always cross my t's.
All in favor? Oh, you had one? Commission, you had one too? Commissioner, yeah, I better raise my hand, Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just, I wanna make sure I understood that, uh, this, the responsibility given to the county manager does not authorize the county manager to reallocate, increase an allocation, change an allocation, otherwise change an allocation, reduce an allocation. Is that correct?
Or change anything that you guys have already put in place? He can't change any, but where there, where there is something that you all have not spoken on, that isn't something that's a crux of the program, or something dealing with funding, I can go to him and seek clarity for it, that's all it's for. And just to clarify, you just mentioned senior home repair. I would like to be able to do that with all of the programs, including small business if something comes up. But in addition to that, there are two documents that I gave you guys. One is a policy document for senior home repair, and one is for small business. I'm gonna ask that you adopt that document, that document will be our bible. And that will be what will guide us with this program. And where this document, if we have a situation where there's something that comes up in this document that's unforeseen, I can go to him and seek clarity for it, as long as it doesn't involve reallocation of funding, or something that changes eligibility, then I can go to the county manager. If not, I still have to come back before the board as a whole.
Thank you. My, my follow-up comment would be, I do not believe this would actually preclude the county manager from polling us in the event of a decision that, that he felt may be a little more critical and need to involve us, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, thank you, Attorney Shannon, I think you answered my question uh, in regards to, uh, I, I think this board, what we have to make a decision on is, do we wanna continue to slow the process of getting the funding out to the community? Or do we wanna figure out a way to streamline this process where we can get those fundings out a lot quicker to the community? So I think at, at the end of the day, that's
It's efficient.
Yes, that's the main, uh, objective of this motion, from my understanding, is do we want it to take longer to get out there to the community? Or do we want to figure out a way how to get it out there, uh, a lot faster? Now, to my understanding, uh, this board has made several, uh, comments previously, that the goal is to get it out there a lot faster. Uh, and we've heard citizens that have come before us and stated that it's taking too long for these funds to actually get to them, to get the things done that they need to help assist them in this particular program. Uh, and so I think what you're asking, and you can correct me if I'm incorrect, it is a way to kinda streamline this process, not to take the decision from the board away, because we've already approved the program, we've already decided how much funding is gonna go into the program, how much each individual receive in all of these various programs.
Correct.
If there is some administrative things that need to be, you can go to the county manager.
Correct.
And then, to my understanding, Mr. County Manager, you will report any of those things that uh, communicate between you and Attorney Shannon, you will report that back to the board, uh, whether it's via email, or whether it's in one of our next board meetings to let us know and update us on what transactions has taken place, so that we're, we know what's going on from a transparent place.
Correct.
Is that accurate?
That is completely one hundred percent accurate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Cowell? Um, Commissioner Sanders?
Question for our attorney, cause I was asking him this. We're about to vote on a policy that we haven't even seen. We just got it today, just, just literally right now, and I just asked the attorney, has he seen it? And he said, no.
So, I mean, if you guys wanna take some
I wasn't, I wasn't finished, I'm sorry. But that has, that has been a, a pattern of this board to give us policy the day of, or the day of to vote for it, thinking we're not gonna read it. There's been times where I received policy that had thirty pages, and if I didn't read it, a resident, a, a person who's in our county, uh, building would've been evicted. And we're getting stuff at the last
be prolonged. If policies were already put in place before the program rolled out, it would not take long. That's why we, and it's no offense to you, but it's business. That's why we hired a consultant. If these policies were already put in place before the program was rolled out, the problem, it wouldn't take long. The only thing we did was increase the amount to thirty thousand dollars. But the policy of how it's gonna be rolled out should have been put in place from the beginning when these programs were already voted on last year.
To address, I'm sorry, the policies were put in place, I'm asking that they be adopted because we've had situations where this board has made a decision about a program, I've taken that information and implemented it, and then six months later, there's a question about whether or not this board voted that way, and we gotta go back and look at video, and did the board say this, and did they specifically say that? If I have a document that you all have adopted, I can point to this document and say, this document was adopted. This has been our policy and procedure, but I want you to adopt it. That way, I don't run into something six months down the line where a commissioner comes and says, I don't remember voting on that, and I have to scour through hours of video to find where in fact you did vote on it. Or contact Ms. Jackie. Or contact Ms. Jackie to get verification. I just want this to be a document that the board votes on, and I can say, this is what the board approved. Here is a particular requirement of the program. So these were already in existence, but they just have not been adopted by the board. And that's just a way to cover myself and Iparametrics as we're doing these programs and to make sure we're on all one accord and there's a written record of what you all approved and what you didn't approve. And I'll go over these, I'm not just asking you to blindly approve these. This is part, like I said, I'm gonna be up here a minute, 'cause I'm going program by program and I'll explain to you. But the most important one is senior home repair, because there's a question about what repairs are allowable and what are not. So I'll get into that now. Senior Lowing...
I was still talking, but I was waiting for her to...
I'm sorry. I'll stop, 'cause there was a motion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I still, but I still, I was, she said, let me answer. Mr. Chairman, she said, let me answer what you were saying. I wasn't even finished with what I was saying.
Hold up for a second. Hold up for a second. Hold up for a second. There's a motion on the floor. We're not gonna go, we're not gonna keep going back and forth. We're not gonna keep going back and forth.
Mr. Chairman, point of order is not a back and forth, because I was speaking and I allowed her, she said, let me answer what you just said. So I allowed her to speak, I was not finished with my...
Do you have another question?
Yeah, I have multiple questions.
Go ahead and answer the question.
Yes. So the question I have, Patrick, have you seen this document before tonight?
Oh, no, I got it. I got it at the same time everyone else did.
That is the reason why I'm questioning right now. Now, wait, Mr. Chairman, I was finishing, I'm going to that point. Can you let me finish? I didn't cut you off, Mr. Chairman. Can you please let me finish? Thank you so much. To reiterate on what stated when you mentioned about going back and watch videos, it's never happened where commissioners did not vote for it. We didn't vote for it, period. And I can pull multiple emails where I said, we didn't do this, and we had to come back. And I, you can, you can ask for open records to my emails, I'll give them to you. And when we had to come back, policies were not put in place that were put out that we had, we're not aware of that was being happening. It would be okay if we received in the beginning. I get multiple calls, and you know that, I forward over to you. I forward over to the county manager, I give his number out on a daily basis. I get calls all the time where constituents are saying things that were not written are being asked of them now. All the time, I can forward you voicemails from constituents. And it doesn't fall on you, it falls on the people who are on the front line, and that's the commissioners of that district. I get many calls saying, this, what is written is not what I was told I had to turn in. So that's what the problem is. If it was put down in detail, then we, nothing would be prolonged. If all this was put in place, nothing would be prolonged. I do have a problem that our county attorney has not received a document before us voting on a policy today. That is not how it's supposed to be in government.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. And you know what? I think, Commissioner Sanders, you made a valid point. Only thing I would say in that prolonged, and we know where you're going, the majority of the board, we know, I think most people maybe even looking know where you're going. Only thing I would say, that you give them a lot of power, the people don't live here. These people don't live in our community. These people don't know the people in our community. They're making decisions that the people they don't know. Haven't been here long enough to know, know them. Only thing what I'm saying. And I think that if they would have wanted a consultant, my fellow commissioners, to make that decision, they would have did it at the ballot box. I think what they voted for at the ballot box was for us to make those decisions. And I think every time, you're cutting them out, you shouldn't cut them out, 'cause these same folk, you may need them again, some of us. So don't cut them out, stop cutting them out, and start doing what they really want. And lastly, about decision housing, lady called me, she was on the crime, she said, well, they wouldn't let me have fifteen thousand dollars, and that was, she said, within my budget, and we had, I said, well, we want thirty thousand dollars. I said, should, she said, well, I wanna put a laminate floor on my house, in my house, and said, within that fifteen thousand dollars, and said, I was told by Iparametrics, the consultants, I was told we couldn't put it on my floor. And I said, well, I don't see a reason why you can put some of that fake-looking wood on your floor. I didn't see why, and it shouldn't have been a reason. Why she, in my opinion, that she shouldn't have. She couldn't, she could have put it on her floor.
I will address that when we get to senior home repair.
If I may please, may I finish my thought? Whenever you have, and I say it, people get, they get a little hot at me, whenever you have people who don't know the people living in town, they come in and do you any kind of way, and then you have a commissioner come on and go along with them. I'm saying...
All in favor? Any opposed? It passes three two. Thank you.
The next motion I have is regarding the clarity regarding the vans that were purchased. I would like to request a motion to seek clarity for the use of the vans. My understanding was that when we got the vans, that they were ultimately going to be parked at the Westside Youth Facility when and if that facility comes of fruition, which we don't even have a space yet. But until that time, it was my understanding that those vans will be able to be used for the youth of all of Newton County, not just certain districts that had qualified census tracts. So with that being said, I would like to seek a motion for clarity that says that the vans can be used by any of the youth in any of the districts of Newton County, and that the van should be under the purview of either the Department of Recreation or whoever handles that for your particular county. That the vans be able to be used by any district as long as it's a youth function. And so I'll leave it at that.
I seek a motion, please.
So move that second.
Is there a second? Is there? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders.
This was for the county manager. The field trips that were scheduled, they were open for whomever wanted to, well, under served tracks based on what our consultant had said previously, and all of a sudden she thought I lived in District Two. I don't know where that came from. But in regards to that, you said you couldn't find two people to drive two shuttles. I find that concerning, out of all of our employees that are in Newton County, and we've had people drive us on a Saturday in a parade. So I came back with a solution, and I sent that email in June. I still have not received a response. I asked, the parents had asked me the question, so any time that I ask a question, nine times out of ten, it's not coming from me. It's coming from the community because I represent them. And so I'm not afraid to ask the hard questions. I put myself out there in Front Street. So I asked the question in that email. I said, have you contacted anybody else but the people in the county? And I said, what are the stipulations of driving the van? Then I asked, had you contacted the sheriff department? I still to this day have not received the response. And so I contacted the sheriff myself, who offered his services and his outreach team to drive those shuttles. There should have never been a reason that trips for a community for youth had to be canceled, all the trips, because two people, we couldn't find two people to drive them in their solution. So my question to you is, is it okay for the sheriff's office, which is a great opportunity, because not only do you have a driver, you have security to drive the trucks? His outreach department, and they actually drove all the vans for Washington Street over the summer for their field trip. So they've been doing it the whole summer for everybody's field trips. So I'm asking this in person, 'cause I have not received a response, I've been asking for three, four times. Is it okay for our outreach department, for the sheriff's office, to be able to drive these shuttles?
Madam Commissioner, I have to take all things in consideration. While you reached out to the outreach program there, I have to take in consideration too, if there's costs assumed associated with that by way of overtime and things of that nature. So I'll follow up with the sheriff to see if there's any feasibility in that. But one of the things I think that was important is that we can't put the cart before the horse. And intrusiveness is not a synonym for inclusiveness. I wanna work in collaboration and unity and togetherness with you and the rest of these commissioners here. But I think when you presented it to me, you had several dates and events, whereas the schedule of the Parks and Recs folks was already built in, where they had thirteen events already planned. So I think the pre-planning component of it was missed because they plan their schedule out in January. In reference to your emails, you know, I'm a working county manager, excuses are monuments of nothingness, so I won't make any. So I'm not sitting at a keyboard, in front of a keyboard all day, because I am out in the community, in my department, is working for the people, ensuring that the purpose is met, and ensuring that we have official processes.
Mr. County Manager, that email was sent a month ago. So I don't think, and you and I have been in corporate, it don't take a month for a response. But in reference to that, you and I had a meeting about those dates. And you asked me, are these dates changeable? And I said, yes, except only one of them, and that was the trip to the Presidential Museum, because President Jimmy Carter is, I don't wanna say on his last leg, but can't, possibly may pass away. And the people said that those dates may not be changed, because once he happens to pass away, you, they're gonna shut down the museum. That was the only one that I told you when we had our meeting, also your executive assistant was in that meeting, that the dates could be changed. I said, they're not etched in stone. I wanted to make sure that I reached out to the people that they had free trips. You still have not gotten back to me on that.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we look at the officer sheriff, if they are willing to drive those vans for us, for the youth.
I second that motion.
My motion was about the use of the vans countywide, it wasn't a question about driving the vans.
That's a two motion.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, those motions can both be voted on. I mean, you could apply them countywide and also authorize a sheriff to drive them.
I think if you, I'm sorry.
I mean, it might be, it might be better to have that as a separate motion altogether.
I think, I think, and I think under the rules of Robert, Robert rules of order, that if there's a second, I mean, a substitute motion, you address that one first, and then you may come up with some other motion.
But I don't disagree, but I'm suggesting...
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah, I'm suggesting that it might be better for those both motions to be voted on.
You can't do both of them at the same time, Patrick.
I'm not suggesting, no, I'm not suggesting...
I tell you what we're gonna do. There's a substitute motion on the floor. It's been a motion by Commissioner Henderson that the sheriff's office drive the vans, and then second by Commissioner Sanders. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. That motion failed. There's another motion on the floor that's been made by Ms. Kennedy. And all in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed?
Wait.
You in favor? I know, I got it. Any opposed? It passes three two. Let's move on, please.
The next one I have is regarding the memorandum of understanding with Newton Family Connection. We originally came to you all and we said that we would have three staff that were part-time helping the seniors with their application, but due to overwhelming response of applications, we need additional staff. Family connection is kinda worn thin, and so instead of three part-time employees, we think we need eight part-time employees.
So let's do this, are you done with the rest of, 'cause this is an item on the agenda?
Oh, okay. I'll discuss that at that point, then I'll move on to the next one, I'm sorry. The next one is I request that a motion to establish an appeals committee. So this will be an appeals committee for all of the Newton County programs where people who are not happy with the decision can come before this appeals committee and put an appeal. I had a meeting with the county manager and Patrick, and we thought it would be a good idea if we had an appeals committee made up of myself, the county manager, Patrick, and a member from the community. And that this committee would be the committee that would handle any appeals from any of the programs that we offer, as opposed to individuals who are unhappy with what they got coming to the board every single time. They'd go to the appeals committee, the appeals committee would review it, I would review it under, I would provide my input under ARPA, county manager and Patrick would provide it under the auspice of the county and any legal. And then we would also have a member of the community that would also be able to be a part of that process for transparency, to make sure that all of the appeals are actually being heard and that we're addressing the issues. This again will allow us to kinda streamline the process, because everyone has a right to an appeal. We give everybody a right to an appeal regardless of the program. If they are unhappy with an amount of assistance that they've received, or they feel that it's not congruent with what was stated, they have a right to appeal, we'll have a committee to review that appeal. So that's the motion, is that the establishment of an appeals committee for all of the programs that are currently offered for ARPA.
Can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman.
You'd like to make a motion?
I have a real, I have a question though, before I make this pertaining to the motion. So in order to make the motion, I have to ask this question. So my question would be is, you stated that, how many people was on this appeals committee again?
There would be four.
And can you mention the titles?
Myself, county manager, Patrick, and then a member of the community.
Is there a reason why we should not add more than one member of the community? And the reason being is, it needs to be more than one, it needs to be about two, a little bit more for transparency. Because now you have our county attorney who is gonna be invoicing us to be on this committee. You're gonna have our chairman, who, I mean, our county manager who's already salaried, but, and you, who also is gonna be invoicing us to be on this appeal committee. So we got two people who's gonna be invoicing us additionally to be on this committee. So it probably, my suggestion would be is to maybe have the commissioners possibly have some, the county manager, and appoint somebody from their, from their actual district to be on that appeals committee.
Well, the purpose of the citizen being on it is for transparency, because technically, ARPA guidelines are ARPA guidelines, and no citizen can change that, right?
Actually, we have some residents who work with ARPA, that we could suggest to be on that board.
And I completely understand that, but what I'm saying is, if we have an appeal, and I come and say ARPA guidelines don't allow it, then ARPA guidelines don't allow it. You all can make a decision to fund it yourself. I'll do a memo, put it in the file and says, my advice is that you not fund it, and if you're audited, then you deal with the consequences. So that being said, you know, the purpose of having someone from the community is transparency, so that there is someone that can see that we are listening to these appeals, we're doing so on a fair process. Once you add two, then the question becomes, who appoints the two on the appeals committee? You've got five districts, right? So at least having one person from the public, we thought was a good idea for transparency, but it would mainly be for them to hear that the process is taking place and hear the discussion, and be able to report back to the board as someone that's disinterested in the process, not necessarily as a contributing vote, because they're not an expert in ARPA, they're not an attorney, nor are they an employee of the county. So it's just mainly for the purposes of transparency, to make sure that what goes on in that meeting is above board, it's copacetic. And if there are any questions that you all may have, you can ask that citizen to come up and report on what happened in that appeals committee. That was the purpose of the citizen.
How many appeals do y'all often have? What's the rate of the amount of appeals that you have?
Believe it or not, not very many. I would say less than ten program-wide. Yeah.
And what would be the rate?
And the reason I want an appeals process is because a lot of people, they feel the appeals process is calling one of y'all and saying, I applied for this program, I only got such and such and such. When we have an official appeals process, we've always had an official appeals process. By including the county manager and the county attorney and a member of the community, I want to make you all comfortable that what decisions go on in that appeals committee, you all can be comfortable with, and not then bring it before the board, because I'm got such and such and such. When we have an official appeals process, we've always had an appeal, official appeals process. By including the county manager and the county attorney and a member of the, uh, community, I want to make you all comfortable that what decisions go on in that appeals committee, you all can be comfortable with and not then bring it before the board. Because I'm gonna tell you now, it's gonna be a million people out there that are not happy with what you've given them. They, we're not gonna make everybody happy. You give them ten thousand, they thought they should've got twenty thousand. They're coming to you, why I didn't get twenty thousand? I applied. They have a right to appeal. And we can explain how we determine what we determine. It's to prevent all of this stuff from coming to you all by having an actual appeals committee.
Anyone else? Are you making a motion?
No.
Wow. So you're just signing a lot of them to everybody?
No, 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 no. Let's, let's, let's correct that, Mr. Chairman. Point of order with you. I did not lie to everybody. I stated that my motion would be made based on that. I'm not gonna make a motion for it. So yeah, I will make a motion. I make a motion to not approve the appeal process. And no, my motion would be, I would have, make this motion in regards to allowing at least two residents on this appeal team, our county manager to be a part of it, and another staff member. The reason being because the two other individuals mentioned are going to be invoiced to the county, which is gonna cost the county more money. And that's my motion.
Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? That motion failed.
This is hilarious.
Can I get a motion on the floor?
This is hilarious.
Can I get a motion on the floor, please?
This is hilarious.
Can I get a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to approve the appeal process as set out by Ms. Kennedy, uh, with three people involved. Thank you. Yeah, one, two, one citizen, three.
It's four people.
It's four, with the resident?
Four, okay, four, yeah.
Is there a second, please? Is there a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. All in favor? Oh, we got discussion, oh, discussion, I'm sorry. Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mr. C. Question I have, uh, Ms. Kennedy, um, what will your invoice be per hour for those?
So you guys have already approved, I've got a do not exceed.
Is it two hundred fifty, is it two hundred fifty dollars?
I have a do not exceed contract, which means my contract can't exceed a certain amount. Even regardless, I'm, I'm on the appeals committee regardless. I have to be because, yeah, I'm the ARPA consultant. I say what ARPA allows and what it doesn't. So either way it goes, it would be billing you the same amount of time.
We're in the courtroom just now.
I'm just trying to tell.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Uh, follow-up question. Patrick, how many, how many will we pay you per hour for sending?
If it's actually, if it's me on the committee, it would be two fifty. If I sent another attorney, it would be whatever the lower rates are for that other attorney.
This committee, just for clarity, this, this appeals committee would meet once a month for about an hour. Once a month for an hour. And let me put that in context. We don't get appeals, every day hundreds of appeals. We very rarely get appeals. So they will be, they will take place once a month for an hour, the appeals committee meeting as well.
And I thank you. And I, and this is my last comment, Mr. C. It's easy spending, uh, the taxpayer money in Newton County. It's easy spending your money. But the question is would I spend my money or would they spend their money the same way they're spending ours?
All, all in favor? Any opposed? It passed three, two. Thank you.
Okay. Nonprofit, this is an update. So the nonprofit program is closed. Um, you allocated three point one million dollars overall for nonprofit. That included general assistance, food pantry, and youth programming. Um, we spent one point one million dollars, so there's roughly one point nine million left. Of the nonprofits that were assisted, we had five applicants in District One. Three were approved to, to the tune of a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. For District Two, we had five applications. Two were approved in, uh, qualified census tracts to the tune of seventy-five thousand dollars. To District Three, we had four applications. Four of those were approved to the tune of a hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars. For District Five, we had ten applications. Six were approved to the tune of three hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And did I do District Four or did I miss it? District Four, there were sixteen applications, of which nine were approved to the tune of five hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. For a total of the one point, um, one point three, actually is the updated amount, one point three. Um, based on that, there is one applicant that is waiting for youth funding. They were approved for fifty thousand, but we only have twenty-two thousand remaining in the youth allocation. I'm asking permission to move twenty-eight thousand of the three hundred and something thousand remaining in food pantry to the youth program so that we can give them the full fifty thousand dollars that they are eligible to receive. It's that, we just ran out of money in the youth program. So, um, like I said, there's roughly, um, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars left in food pantry. And I'm asking that we transfer twenty-eight thousand of that over to youth so that we'll have the remaining fifty thousand to give to this last organization.
We need that as a form of a motion, please.
Yes.
Is there a second? It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Uh, discussion. Commissioner Henderson, go ahead.
Question that I, that I had was, uh, who are the, uh, I guess nonprofit in District Four, or can you not give their, their names?
Um, I have a list of nonprofits, but they're not broken down by district. Um, we have Two Helping Hands Food Pantry, The Church of Covington, Community Arts Association in Newton County, Al Covey Casa, Inc., Newton Education Foundation, Building Strong Futures Incorporated, Covington First United Methodist Church, Sisters Overcomes in Christ Unity Ministry, Oxford Baptist Church, Clearview Ministries, Ministries in Action, Newton Black Historical, Good Hope Baptist Church, The Shepherd's Tent, Pleasant View Baptist Church, Washington Street Community Center, Salem United Methodist Church, The FOJM Learning Center, Rainbow Community Center, Taylor Made Foundation, Solid Rock Baptist Church, The YMCA of Newton County, Repairs of the Breach, and Mount Zion First Baptist Church. For all of the, uh, people who received funding for the nonprofit.
Yes, ma'am. How much did Pleasant View receive?
I'm sorry, you said Pleasant View?
Yes, ma'am.
Pleasant View got one hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents.
Okay, this, uh, Pleasant View off of, um, I think Salem, it was on the Salem Road. Pleasant View off of, um...
I'm not sure where it's located.
Okay, how much did, uh, Mount Zion, it's in District Five, how much did Mount Zion Baptist Church receive?
Uh, Mount Zion, sorry, one second. Mount Zion Baptist Church, thirty thousand. That's all they applied for.
Uh, I, I know a little bit about that one because I, I kind of frequently visit that particular church. How many did, uh, um, I think, one second, Good Hope, about one sixty-two, how many did they receive?
I'm sorry, you said what's the name of the organization?
Good, Good Hope Baptist Church.
Good Hope? Good Hope Baptist Church got six thousand, twenty-two dollars and eighty-three cents.
And, and, and the reason why is if, if that, all of the minority churches got little to no money. They got even less than the money, the amount of money that, with exception of Pleasant View, less than the amount of money that we were giving, we wanted to give at least ten thousand dollars to each church, in which they didn't receive. And to the Tiki Alice building, it was eight hundred dollars, I think.
So the, the way that these were calculated.
No, ma'am, if I, if I just make a, continue, hey, you know how it works and, you know, when you, in, uh, when you're in court, you let the other folks talk.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, that's fine, ma'am. I appreciate it, Ms. Kennedy. But, um, those were the, the, businesses, the nonprofits, that we were trying to help, the ones who, who had food insecurity. Now, we, we knew about Pleasant View because there's a lot of cars they have, they have to hit the road, and they give away food. We know about Mount Zion who's, who serves just as many as Pleasant View. And you say, well, how do I know? Because I know the churches. You know, that's, that's what I like doing. And so, um, they should've been given more money. In fact, they shouldn't have been left out the way that they have been. And especially Ms. Terry for the eight hundred and some dollars. Uh, I just don't know. I think, we talk a good game, but at the end of the day, the, uh, poor peoples in the underserved areas, they'll get little to nothing. And it's got to change. We're gonna make a big difference in our community.
Sir, just for clarity, uh, Mount Zion only applied for thirty thousand dollars in food pantry. They were awarded thirty thousand in food pantry.
Well, Pastor William Tim said the paperwork was so strenuous. In fact, he, I was talking to somebody else and he just almost took me away from conversation. And he said that he knew there was a greater need for it. And so he made it harder and difficult for them to get their money. That's what he told me. Now, ask him if he lying. I'm pretty sure he's the type of man he take. But anyway, getting back to it, it's the underserved churches are getting nothing and everybody else, the ones who, big churches got, make a lot of money, who's got a lot of money, are getting the big bucks that we're not getting, and the poor folks are not getting nothing.
So for clarity, the calculation for nonprofit assistance was you could get food pantry up to fifty thousand, I'm sorry, youth services up to fifty thousand, food pantry up to thirty thousand. General nonprofit was based on revenue loss for the nonprofit, based on income tax returns from the IRS. We have to take that. If the church could not demonstrate, based on the documentation that they submitted to the IRS, that they had a loss of revenue, we could not give them more than what they showed on their IRS documentation. That is not a Kennedy-Shannon rule. That is not an Iparametrics rule. That is a United States Department of Treasury rule.
Willing helpers.
Willing helpers did not have a reduction in revenue, so they did not get assisted.
We, we had give them.
They didn't get assisted in this round. You gave.
You approved it.
You gave willing helper, you gave willing helper six hundred thousand before I came on board. That was before you brought Iparametrics on board.
Hold on, hold on. Commissioner Sanders, go ahead.
Um, the question I have is in regards to.
Oh, wait, wait, what's the?
I don't know. I, I think you just cut me off. And, but it's typical, it's typical.
We're not finna go back and forth like that, man.
We're not going back and forth. I was, she was, I was talking, then she started talking to me. Mr. C, can you, can you see that?
Nah, I, we're not finna go back and forth like that.
I'm not going back and forth. Talk to her. Can you talk to Kennedy? Or you wanna talk to me?
I'm talking to both of y'all.
No, 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 you, you stopped me from talking.
I'm talk, I, I.
We take turns and speaking. And that, that was the rule when I first went out.
Do you have a question?
Huh?
Right, it's like get used to.
Well, you know what, you know, it's just.
Do you, no, no, no. Do you have a question? Because I'm finna call for the motion. We're not finna, guys. Do you have a question? If you have a question, ask your question.
The question is, is why is the, the poor people are not getting any money? And when you go in a list, everybody's getting money. Then when you go in the community, you go in the communities, half of the folks don't get what they, what they need to be getting. And all those poor people who asked for a little house to be repaired are still not getting anything. You tell them, you give them less money instead of thirty dollars that we approved, thirty thousand. That's not right.
Commissioner, um, Sanders, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a question in regards to, I had some nonprofits came to me and said they'd received forms, and I did see them myself, about a reimbursement, uh, grant. So, because I know we never voted on that as a board for reimbursement.
So when we first established nonprofit, we discussed doing reimbursement for food and youth services, not general nonprofit. When we talked to Brittany, who's cutting all these checks, she said it would be a logistical nightmare to do it on a reimbursement basis because she's already cutting all these checks. And then she would then have to cut up multiple checks based on reimbursement. So we switched it to a general reimbursement, just a one lump sum. However, food pantry and youth services have to submit a monthly report about what they're doing with the money and who they're serving. This is the report template that you all have, yes.
And I'm glad you mentioned that because I had some nonprofits call me who said they were not even aware until a letter just came out recently that they had a report monthly. And they were concerned about the staffing because it was like, how are we gonna do this monthly when we don't have the manpower? So I had a lot of non, and you can, you can, you can frown on it, but these, these residents called and I forwarded that over. See, you don't understand what the issue's at. It's not coming at you. It's the residents that voted in place are concerned about the process. And so if these documents, if they felt these documents were not given to them in the beginning, that's what the issue lies.
They were. It was in the contract that they signed before they got their check. The same contract that chairman has to sign before any money is mailed. Every single nonprofit signed it. If you would like a copy for a particular nonprofit, I would be happy to send it to you.
Yeah, de- definitely send that to me because I want to see what they're, they're actually.
And the report, you have a copy of it. It's not strenuous at all. It asks various general questions. What did you spend the money on? How many youth did you service? What did you do? Was it a summer camp? It's a two-page document. It's not a twelve-page audit. We just need to know, by we, the board needs to know where this money went, right? How many youth were ultimately served by this money? How many people in food pantry ultimately got food? Don't you want to know that information? We have to get that information. If it's burdensome to some organizations to fill that out, unfortunately, ARPA also wants this information. So, you know, if they need assistance, we can help them. But this report is two pages.
Attorney Kennedy, it's not that they are not wanting to be transparent. They were questioning the amount of, of, we have to have the report. The county don't report monthly. I mean, we may have a report that comes from our finance director, but to report to the government, no entity reports monthly unless they're set up that way with sales tax. So that's why they were questioning it because they don't have to do it in their, like, big places like Wash, well, Washington Street. They, they don't have to report monthly. So they're like, why do we have to do this when we don't have to do it with other grants? They have to report the information. So they were questioning that. So what probably needs to happen to stop all the questions, and there needs to be a workshop with all of the people who actually receive these grants, go over to them in detail. Because you have to realize, some of these individuals have never applied for a grant ever in life. They've utilized assistance from the community. They've had fundraisers, but they've never applied for a federal grant. So we cannot get upset with the people who are asking these questions because this is new to them. So to resolve the issue, you educate them versus getting upset with them. Because obviously, they do not know.
I understand. I would ask you, look at the report template and review it yourself. You have a copy. If you see that that report template is too cumbersome to fill out on a monthly basis, then we can address it at this point. But I've sent you all, you all have a copy of it. It's two pages. It's extremely simple. And I would be more.
It's simple to you. Everybody is a different learner. Please understand that, me being a teacher. Everybody has a different learning style.
I understand that. I will be more than happy to do a workshop, but please understand that if I do a workshop, it will be billed at time.
It don't, it don't have to be with.
That you all clearly have concerns about me spending time.
We have a county manager. We have a county manager. We got a county manager.
There's a motion on the floor to transfer the funds. I'm calling for the motion. All in favor? The twenty, the, the, can you, can you?
Yes.
Transfer twenty-eight thousand dollars from food insecurity to youth program.
Correct.
All, yeah, you made the motion. All in favor? Thank you. Pass five, oh.
Perfect. And then the next motion is to, um, adopt the monthly report template that you guys have a copy of. It's two pages. This is the template that the organizations have to fill out. It asks for their name, their contact, the total amount of their grant, how much funding they've received, how much they spent during this one-month period, how much is remaining. It asks what they spent the money on, what type, number of people served, any key achievements for the program, any challenges or solutions, and any planned services for next month. That's it. Those are the only questions on this report. That's all it asks.
Thank you, ma'am.
And a signature and a date.
Thank you, ma'am. I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I was trying to review the document because I just got it in my hand.
Okay. I call for the motion.
So, I, I, I understand you call for the motion, but our attorney, our, our attorney was trying to show me where the document was located so I can see it to have a vote.
Our attorney's not running this meeting. You either vote for it or.
Why we have an attitude, Mr. Chairman? I'm just explaining to you that we have the law here that says we have, that he was trying to let me see it.
Ma'am, we're trying to run a meeting here. If you don't mind, can we continue to run the meeting, please?
Yeah, you can run the meeting. I'm just explaining to you that I just got the document. What's so with the attitude? It's okay. God bless.
So it passes, it passes, um, three, one, on extension.
Perfect. All right, next, senior home repair. So as stated, um, and this, this is data as of last night. And by last night, I mean ten o'clock last night.
Okay.
There are eight hundred and fifty-five registrants in the system. These are people who have taken the first step to apply for senior home repair. There are two hundred and fifty-three applications. Twenty-eight are approved to the tune of four hundred and eight thousand dollars. That being said, twenty-eight reflects four hundred and eight thousand dollars. That's twenty-five percent of the money that you guys have allocated almost for this program. Because at the last meeting, you increased it a million dollars and you increased the amount to thirty thousand dollars. So that being said, we've got money left over from nonprofit assistance that I think would be best served by moving to senior home repair. Two million dollars is not gonna be enough. When you've got two hundred and fifty-three applications sitting there, we won't even be able to touch a twenty-five percent of them with two million dollars. It'll be gone, especially when you increase the amount to thirty thousand dollars. So that being said, between the money that's remaining through ERAP, which is roughly about a hundred and seventy-three thousand, and then the almost one point eight, one point nine remaining from nonprofit assistance, that represents another two million dollars that you guys could potentially put into low-income senior repair. This has been the most popular program that we have offered by far. And clearly, there is a need in the community. You all have the resources to put additional funding in this program. So I would ask that a motion be entertained, that whatever the final amount is, after we reconcile nonprofit, be moved over to senior home repair, and the same for ERAP. In addition to the. In addition to the million that you've already put in there, so to make it a total of four.
Can I get a, can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards that we transfer the money, that the remaining funds for both of those programs.
ERAP and nonprofit assistance.
Okay. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. C. So, how much excess cash, I think we, we gave, we gave the hospital, and I support it, and I still do, think a million, then we went and found another, um, at the hospital, I think, two million, two million two, two point two million, uh, two point two million. And so, how much money do we have left, excess money and all the funding, and maybe Ms. Brittany or somebody could answer that for me?
I don't have that number, because I don't have the final reconciled amount that you gave to the hospital. That's what I missed.
Could somebody from finance kind of give me that particular number, if it's not too much to ask, either the chairman or county manager?
Brittany, you have that number tonight? I'm sorry?
How much was the hospital bringing? Out of ARPA? Seven fifty?
So, if it was seven fifty, you roughly have about three and a half million left, not allocated. And this, this money I want to move is not touching that three million that you still have left.
So, if, if we can give the hospital one million, can we add another additional million to our senior homes? And, uh, I mean, look here. Some of our senior homes, homes are falling almost down. And a little bit of money that we're giving is not going to fix them up, but it will make their homes a little bit better or more livable. We can give money to everybody else, and we all heard about the money that we've given to all these people. And, but this is a program that will go directly up our seniors. And so, I would like to see additional million dollars go with the, with two million dollars, Mr. Kennedy.
Correct. So, you wanted a total of five instead of a total of four?
Yes.
I agree with J.C. I agree with J.C. Is there a second? The motion is, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you have the two million.
Can we make a substitute motion? Commissioner Henderson would like to make a substitute motion.
I'd like to make the substitute motion, what I just stated.
About, you have about two million dollars. I agree with Commissioner Mason.
If I might add, you, if you move the two million from nonprofit and ERAP, right, that'll make it a total of four. If after that point, you still see you need some more, then you still have the right to move that other million dollars in there. I caution you to keep some money to the side, because you still have until 2026. There are other programs that you guys may want to do. So, I think four million dollars is a, is a really good amount of money to fund the senior home repair program. It's one of the largest that I've seen. So, that would be my.
Commissioner Henderson was making a substitute motion. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I did. So, make sure it's legal. Mr. Patrick, could you give it to us, please?
Yes, so as I understand it, Mr. Henderson, your motion would be to transfer the excess nonprofit and ERAP money to senior home repair, and an additional one million dollars to senior home repair from the unallocated ARPA funds.
Did I have a second? Was there a second? Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Henderson motion, and Commissioner Sanders second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Attorney Shannon, what does that leave us in reserve for miscellaneous programs that we may have or need for?
Roughly doing rough math, about two point five that you'll have left over, if you were to put the full five million as opposed to the four million.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? It passes five oh. Yay.
All right. Okay. Um, the next thing I want to discuss, and this is what's causing the bottleneck of the program, right? And this program is yours to curtail or critique, but most low-income senior home repair programs are meant to take care of repairs that are a threat to health and safety, due to hazardous conditions in the home of the senior. This money for most senior home repairs are not just thirty thousand dollars for people to redecorate their house as they see fit, right? It has to be something that threatens health and safety. So, the document that I put forth for eligible repairs, it lists eligible repairs and ineligible repairs. This list was comprised by looking at twenty other senior home, low-income senior home programs across the country. The list includes of eligible repairs, roofs, electrical systems, plumbing systems, septic systems, heating and air HVAC systems, repairs to floors or walls with structural damage, insulation, windows and door replacements, bathroom modifications, and ramps necessary for the homeowner with a physical disability to safely access and use the home for basic life functions. Excluded repairs include the purchase or repair of appliances not permanently attached to the home, including refrigerators, stoves, dishwashers, dryers, off-site infrastructure, sheds, barns, fences, bridges, patio decks, driveway repairs unless there is a documented trip hazard, relocation costs of the homeowner, tools and work-related appliances that do not stay with the home, exterior siding, cosmetic improvements, including interior paint, exterior paint, or updated flooring, unless it causes a health or safety issue. So, unless there's lit paint or something like that, then that's different. Or if your floorboard is coming up, and it's a trip hazard, but to just want to cosmetically replace your floors, most low-income senior home repairs don't allow for that. Um, elective home improvements, upgrades, or renovations, repairs to any detached structures, landscaping, lawn sprinklers, walkways, or fences, those what are excluded. What I, we need a list that is voted on by this board, so we know what to approve and what not to approve. We have gotten requests from the gamut. I had one citizen says that the doctor says she needs to be out in the sun, so she wants a new deck on the back of her house. I had another citizen that says that their kitchen cabinets are twenty years old, and they want new kitchen cabinets. Nothing about health and safety. Do we want, allow the seniors to just make general home repairs with this? Or does it have to affect the health and safety? Because the, the main purpose of a program like this is to increase the housing stock for the next twenty years. Most of our seniors are aging, and eventually, they're going to leave that house to a loved one. And we want that house and that housing stock to service Newton County for the next twenty years. So, it needs a new roof. It needs a new HVAC. It needs new windows. Cosmetic stuff is really not what this grant is for. If you want to make this grant for that, by all means, sure, money, do what you want to do. But as it relates to low-income senior home repair programs across the country, there has to be a health and safety component to it. And it's supposed to allow a senior to stay in their home when they've got rainwater coming in through the, the living room, right? Or where there's electrical wires hanging out, and there's a health and safety aspect. Not because I want to repaint my house and get new floors and get an upgraded door. That's not what most low-income senior home repairs are about. So, I come to you asking you to approve this list. Clearly, it's not exhaustive, but it's something that gives us a guiding light to say, this falls in this category, this doesn't fall in this category. Because if not, you know, if we just give everybody what they ask for, everybody's going to ask for thirty thousand dollars, and everybody's going to redo their house however they see fit with that thirty thousand dollars. So, there it is.
I do have one suggestion, because a lot of the homes that was built many, many years ago don't have gutters on them.
Yep.
And the water, rainwater's ran down the side, the siding of the house.
So, that's included in roofing. We will allow that.
The siding of the house?
The, the, the gutters. And if you have a situation where there's, like, the outside of the house, so another thing we're asking for are before pictures. We have no idea to know what the structure of these repairs are, because we can't physically see them. So, we're asking applicants to show us pictures to show how it's a health hazard, right? Because otherwise, we don't know, you know, I trust our seniors, but people are people. And some might, some might say, yes, this is a health hazard. I need a whole new kitchen. We've not physically seen it. So, we're asking for pictures in the application that the contractors who come out and do the estimates can take to show us what the hazard is and what needs to be replaced. And it just provides transparency, because at the end, we have someone from Newton County going out, taking pictures of the repair, and signing off to say that the work has in fact been done before we will release our second payment. It's just a way to make the program more transparent, and it allows us to see on the program side, when we're approving this stuff, what the actual repair or the thing that needs to be repaired looks like, because we're taking people's word for it.
And Patrick said he didn't hear handicap improvements.
So, um. Yeah, so we've got bathroom modifications and ramps, ramps necessary for the homeowner with physical disabilities to safely access and use the home for basic life functions. I can add to that any additional handicap improvement.
Okay. Commissioner Sanders?
I just want to, I wouldn't say it's a correction, but the first statement you made about the person with the son and their doctor, she has cancer. So, to make that statement in a funny type of way, and that constituent possibly is watching, she lives in my district, I know that case oh too well. And so, I suggest, when we make suggestions like that to that magnitude, that can hurt somebody who's fighting for their life. And the reason why I state that before you cut me off is because she did have an order from her doctor. She has a debt, because she is paying for her cancer bills, radiation, and so forth. She fell through her deck and injured herself. So, her doctor required her to be out in the sun, because she does have cancer. She couldn't afford to repair her deck. So, I actually spoke to you about that. So, I do ask, when you make statements like that, because it was made in a, in a light, funny type way, and she may be watching, we have to be very careful, because I'm pretty sure I'm going to get a call tonight.
For clarity, I'm not talking about that applicant.
But that have the applicant with the doctor and the son, that, that is the applicant.
Can I answer your question? The applicant that I'm referencing does not have an existing deck. Your applicant had a deck that she wanted repaired. That's a different case. I'm telling you about a different applicant. That's not the same applicant.
And if I didn't say anything, guess what? They would have took your statement and ran with it. So, we have to be very careful when we mentioning that, because you and I spoke in regards to her in that light. I have the email.
Commissioner Henderson.
We never spoke about that.
Commissioner Henderson.
Well, you know, it's, it's my suggestion that, that when it comes to repairs, wherever they may be, is that the contractor, who's actually going to be getting paid to do that, have to take a picture of it. And then, somebody to have to approve, whether it's anywhere, well, you know, because some old folks don't have hot water.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, if they take a picture of it, then I think you, you, so you or somebody from your office, or somebody should look at it and say, well, maybe we will approve that, and then come back later on and have somebody go and look at it, and make sure that the work has been done before they get, get paid. So, I believe we should, it, it could be for anything, but it's up to you to prove it or just run and give a list and say, we ain't going to prove this. Let them send in what they, what they want to, and then you say, well, we are not going to pay for that, but we'll pay for this.
What else? There's a proposal. Let's see if we're going to get a motion for it or what. Is there, a motion on the floor, please?
To vote on the list that I provided, the guidelines that I provided, with the inclusion of any additional things for handicap, and with the inclusion of siding when necessary.
Yes. Can I get a motion, please? Is there a second? It's a motion by Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Cowan. Any more discussion? Commissioner, uh, Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're just talking about the eligible repairs and things that are not repaired. I have a question regarding your proof of ownership.
Yes.
And I don't know if you want to get to that now, or?
Yeah, we can talk about it now.
Okay. And Patrick, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I do title work and closings and everything. What I found in Newton County, particularly in some of the older neighborhoods, is that somebody dies, they gave a will, and they said, mama gave me the house. So, mama, the child goes over to the house, or to the tax office, gets a tax bill, and they pay taxes forever. But they don't have a real deed.
Correct.
Can we change that and just say, uh, uh, proof of ownership, mortgage deed, or three years uh, proof of paying taxes, plus, I'm thinking maybe an affidavit of ownership that they can fill out and saying they're not renting the property to somebody else?
So, we've talked about that. Patrick and I have talked about that, where there, there has to be a probate of the final will in order to.
You're not going to get a probate done quickly.
No, and I understand that. Where we, where our hands are tied is that ARPA will only allow us to spend funding for home repair for the homeowner. And unfortunately, even in the situation you gave, where they said mama gave me the house, and I've been paying the taxes, because it's not probated, we have no way of knowing if there are other heirs who may have a claim to that property, right? And they may submit and say, it's my house, because mama left it to me, and they got three other brothers. And we give this money, and we fix up this house, and then these three brothers come and say, well, now it's my house. Then they have to go and probate. So, that's why we excluded situations like that. And there was actually a, a request, when I talked to Laura Bertram from Newton County Family, about creating, using some of this ARPA money to help individuals that are in that situation get that straightened out, so that they can get the deeds to their house, because that affects a number of homeowners in Newton County.
Yeah.
They don't have ownership documentation, because they've never gone to probate it, and a lot of them can't afford it. So, there might be an opportunity for us to look at using some of that ARPA money to create a program where we will help families that need to get stuff probated and get the actual deed to their house in their hands done. I think that's worth a conversation or a discussion. But ARPA regulations preclude us from just taking an affidavit of ownership.
Well, is there a process in place where a person can apply and maybe hold his status until that's done? Because what happens, the money's going to run out.
It is, and that's the problem.
It's going to take a while to get the probate.
I agree. And if we hold their spot.
Is there a way to hold it?
If we hold their spot, then we're holding and prolonging the program. Because as you, you're an attorney, you know, probate can take six months to a year in some cases, depending on the probate. And then, depending on if there are other heirs you have to give notice to, and then those heirs come to court and assert a claim. So, it can be pretty time-consuming, and that would require us to keep the program open. I, I, I feel for those that are in that situation, because we've had to tell people who applied, unfortunately, because you don't have a deed, you can't apply, because you can't show ownership. And it sucks that we have to do that, but as it stands now for this program, now, is there an opportunity for us to do a program using ARPA where we help people get that situated, and then do another senior home repair round two later down the road or something? We could potentially do that. But to hold a program open now for a process that may take six months to a year, I wouldn't recommend it, only because of cost of keeping that program open.
Well, I think it's just having a detrimental effect on poor.
It is. I agree. I completely agree.
It's, um.
If you all would entertain the creation of a program.
It's not a good way to do it. Patrick, if you've got any other suggestions?
Yeah, we, we discussed this issue a couple of weeks ago internally, and I'm, I'm really hesitant to, and I agree with Kennedy. I, I'm, I'm really hesitant. In fact, I tend to doubt we are authorized to give the ARPA funds until they can establish ownership. I mean, if, if we had a finite number of applicants in that position, you could, if you have some ARPA funds unallocated, you could hold those applications open and grant them later, but I, I mean, at some point, my, my concern is, you'll just have things that are out there lingering forever, right? I mean, maybe, maybe you could do something where you put up, and plus, the quotes are going to die. You know, if I get a quote today to, to replace my roof, that quote's no good in, what, sixty, ninety days?
You'd be surprised, inside Covington. You know, people died back in the seventies, or even in the eighties. And there was no proper probate. They just started paying the taxes so that the sheriff wouldn't come by and pick it up.
And take it. I think.
You could have a time limit, you know, and, and allow them to come back and reapply every.
Well, here's the thing, I don't, I think the issue a lot, for a lot of them that haven't done it already, is they, they can't afford to. So, having a program that can help them pay the cost to do that, I think is more important, because they would have done it already if they could afford to. A lot of these individuals are low income. A lot of these individuals are low income. They don't have the money to pay a probate attorney to go through probate and do that. So they just continually pay, like you said, pay the taxes and hope that nothing happens. But eventually, if they want to establish ownership, they're gonna have to probate it. So maybe looking at putting five hundred thousand dollars of ARPA money into a program that will pay the attorney's fees.
Usually those are not done until somebody dies.
Yep.
And then there's another, there's two estates you gotta deal with.
Yep, because then you've got one, the grandma died, and then that grandma died. And it's only until somebody needs that deed. Yeah, that they need it, and that's the expense is paying an attorney to do that.
My question is, is it possible to escrow the money in some sort of account?
Would that count as, would ARPA consider that to be money spent? I mean...
I mean, you can put it to the side, but how long are you willing to put it to the side? That's the thing, you don't know how long a probate process will take. And they may or may not even be successful. If a sibling comes out of nowhere and says, well, I want it too. Now you got two owners, and two, both owners have to apply.
Probate can take years.
Years, and that's what I'm saying. I, my overall opinion is that they're just gonna have to miss out on this opportunity because it's not, they're not gonna be able to get it done in thirty to sixty days. And because of that, now unless they've got a quick probate, right? If you have no other heirs, you're the only heir. I know in Michigan, I can get a thirty day quick probate because there's nobody else to challenge. I don't know how that is here. So if it's longer here, I would advise against keeping that program prolonged because you've got to keep it open, you've got to keep the staff on board, you've got to account for that money sitting there that may or may not come. I think it's better served maybe putting some ARPA funding into a program that says, look, if you're in this situation and you got a property from your great grandmother or your grandmother, and you haven't been able to probate, you can apply for a grant, and we'll pay five thousand towards your legal fees to get it probated, and now you've got a deed. And you could potentially help a hundred households at five thousand a pop with five hundred thousand dollars in an ARPA program do that. I think that would be a really good use of funding for the community because Laura Bertram told me there are a lot of seniors and a lot of people that are in that situation that own their home but don't legally own their home.
They think they own it.
They think they own it, correct.
They do.
Yep. So my hands are tied legally because I'm with you. If I could help them, I would.
Uh, well, if we can't do it, we can't do it.
So would a, I don't wanna call it, I don't know what name to put on it, kind of a legal assistance program being authorized ARPA expenditure?
Yes.
So maybe...
Especially if they're low income.
Yeah, maybe we look at, maybe we look at creating a program like that because, you know, maybe some of them are easily solved.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe there, maybe there's some out there.
Some are, some are not.
Yeah, and if, but the ones that aren't, you might be able to put them on the path to fixing it.
Right, it might be, it might be a thousand dollar attorney bill and they can get it straight out.
That might be just as valuable as fixing somebody's roof ultimately.
Yep.
Could be, yeah.
Maybe that's something we look at and present.
So if you want to sketch something together what that might look like, but I think that would be a really good program.
Do we want to make a motion then, or a substitute motion for that? To ask for a program to provide for, uh, I guess, what do you call it, legal assistance?
Legal assistance.
For probate issues?
I think that would be separate, and it might make more sense to let Kennedy kind of create a program.
Okay.
I can do that.
Do that and bring something back.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson, where would that five hundred come from?
Out of the two point five you still have sitting there. Yep.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
The list, yep. Okay.
All in favor? Any opposed? Pass three, two.
Thank you. And then small business assistance. Small business assistance is up and rolling. Um, we, we are reaching out to the list of small businesses that we had that we were originally given when we first came on board to let them know that this is now live, so that they can go in and apply. Um, because we want them to go in and apply. Um, the small businesses can get up to twenty thousand dollars. Again, this is, the way it's calculated is the same way we calculated for nonprofit. They have to show tax returns, they have to show a reduction in revenue. We can give them up to twenty thousand dollars based on that reduction of revenue. How it works, if you as a business had a thirteen thousand dollar reduction in revenue, you get a grant for thirteen thousand dollars. The rules say the grant that we give you has to be reasonable and proportionate to the loss incurred. So we can't give you a hundred thousand dollar grant because you lost thirteen thousand dollars. It has to be proportionate to your loss. So we'll give them up to twenty thousand dollars if they can demonstrate it. Now conversely, if they can only demonstrate a two thousand dollar loss, they'll get a two thousand dollar grant. That's really cut and dry. It's based on Schedule Cs if they're an LLC, personal docs if they're a sole proprietor, so it's based on IRS documents. The, because I'm asking for you to approve this eligibility process too. I want to go over the ineligibility criteria. These are the businesses that we're excluding, and this is a list that come from some of the other programs across the country because we want to focus on small businesses with less than twenty-five employees. So any franchises, so any McDonald's, Burger Kings, we don't want them getting this money. Any hotels or motels, any liquor stores, financial lending institutions. We have private membership or fraternal organizations or businesses, adult oriented businesses, national regional chain businesses, bars. Um, bars are eligible if less than fifty percent of their revenue comes from alcohol. So if they're, if they're a restaurant and most of their revenue comes from food, then they're eligible. But if more of their income comes for liquor, then they're not eligible. Nightclubs, vape shops and hemp shops, gambling businesses, and then businesses owned in part or fully by a Newton County employee or family member of those individuals. An employee means all officials, officers, members, employees, whether elected or appointed, whether paid or unpaid, of the government of the city and all of its agencies, as well as family members of those individuals. And that's just a caveat that goes in for most of the ARPA programs. They have to show two consecutive years of tax returns. They can either show twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one to show that loss, or they can show twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two to show that loss. We'll take whichever gives them the higher grant amount. Um, they have to show ID, they have to have a completed W nine, they have to have an occupational tax certificate as requested before. Um, we verify their identity through Comply Cube. That's a system that's similar to what the IRS uses. They take a picture of the ID and then they have to physically show their face so we know that we're actually cutting the check to who we need to cut it to. Um, they must be in Newton County to be eligible. Um, twenty thousand is the max. Payments will be made within thirty days in one lump sum payment. They will receive a grant agreement that will state these terms. They will have to sign it. It will be signed by the chairman before they get their check. Funds will be dispersed until they've been exhausted. Applying for an application in no way approves you for money. It just says, you know, you apply until it's gone. If the small business got any other assistance for being a small business for COVID, we're asking that they be excluded from this program so that we can give money to small businesses who did not get any COVID money and were not able to get any assistance. Applications can take anywhere from thirty to forty-five days to process. That's dependent upon the applicant and providing the documentation necessary. And that's about it. So I'm asking that you all adopt this policy and process for small business assistance as well.
Can I get a motion, please? It's a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders?
Just a suggestion, if we can place on the document what specific type programs that they've already applied for, in my mind, I'm thinking PPP. Examples of those, they know exactly what those programs are that related to COVID.
Absolutely. We'll, they'll put that, if that's not on the application already, which I think it is, we will specify the type of small business assistance programs that are already out there so they know which ones we're talking about. And we'll list in any other catch-all to get those that are not listed.
It's probably pretty unlikely you run across this, but we might as well address it. Some, the overwhelming majority, majority of those PPP loans were ultimately forgiven, but some weren't.
Correct.
Is there gonna be a carve out that if you actually got a loan and paid it back?
So here's the thing, actually, we don't even necessarily, because how you determine duplication of benefit, you have to look at the same point in time. PPP happened, what, two, three years ago, two years ago? What? But it's not current. So unless somebody just got PPP for the same period of time they're applying for this grant, there really shouldn't be a duplication of benefit. Now, if they applied to some other organization and got a small business grant, you know, thirty days ago, sixty days ago, that's different, then that's considered a duplication. But if it was something that was PPP that they got in twenty twenty or something, and we're giving them the money in twenty twenty-three, that's not considered a duplication of benefit because it's not in the same time. So most of the small businesses should be okay.
All in favor? Thank you, it passes, five oh.
All right, last but not least, grants. So we got really good news from Jocelyn Gilbert, who's the legislative assistant for Congressman Hank Johnson. We've passed another round for Brown Bridge Road expansion, so we are included in the text, the legislative text. So next, Congress just has to approve the budget, and if so, we'll get that, almost a million dollars for that project. Um, a week ago, we submitted a budget for the Department of Transportation for the Save for All program to, uh, we wanted to create a plan to ensure safe and adequate accommodations of all users of the transportation system in Newton County, ranging from pedestrians, bicyclists, to personal conveyance, micro mobility users, public transportation users, children, older individuals, and individuals with disabilities. We asked for five hundred thousand dollars. I'm sorry, we asked for four hundred thousand dollars, and there's a hundred thousand dollar match. So we worked with Chester to submit this. What this plan would allow us to do is come up with projects, including sidewalks. And once we have those projects in this plan, next year we can apply to the Department of Transportation for implementation money, construction money to actually do the projects. But you can't get that money unless it's in a plan. So we need to have a plan. You all don't have a plan. And so we submitted that, and hopefully we'll get awarded for that. There's an infrastructure grant that was released by the state. It's up to five hundred thousand dollars. It has a fifty percent match. And I'm wondering if there are any potential projects that you guys think we can put forward. If there are, let me know because we have to do a letter of interest by Friday to say we're interested in possibly applying. We are eventually going to meet with the county manager and with each of the department heads to see what their wish lists are as it relates to grants and projects. The only list I have now is Chester's list. So that's the list I've been working off of, getting all the public work stuff done. So I'll get with Chester and see if he has a project for this. Uh, but it does require that fifty percent match. Um, so as you all know, we apply for the grants, but obviously before we can accept them, they have to come to the board, so. And then just asking for any updates on Westside Youth Facility. I talked to county manager, he said you guys are gonna be discussing that later in the month. So, because we still have that four million dollar grant out there hanging, and we have to start moving in a direction to get that information submitted. So any movement you all can make on that front would be greatly appreciated so that we can get that information submitted to HUD. So that does it for my grant report. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. C. So I'm just trying to get my understanding. So my understanding is that for the grant for Chester and I guess the road department and other grants, so you, you would be paid a percentage of that particular grant if it's awarded, or how that, how does that work?
No, I'm only, we only bill for the hours to write the grant. We don't get a percentage of the grant if it's awarded. So if it takes four, if it takes four thousand dollars of effort for us to write a million dollar grant or a two million dollar grant, you get the two million dollars for four thousand dollars of effort.
So we pay, uh, the county would pay for it before we received any grant money?
You pay for the writing of the grant, correct?
Per hour.
Per hour, correct.
And it's, was two fifty an hour?
No, my rate's not as high as Patrick's. I wish.
I guess, so I would know unless it's some type of secret, so how much is it?
No, my rate is one eighty-two.
Okay, one eighty-two.
But the grant writers that work for us, we don't bill them at one eighty-two. I get involved at one eighty-two. When I'm involved, it's at one eighty-two, but if it's grant writing, our grant writers bill at a lower amount. I think it's one twenty-five for grant writers.
Yes, ma'am. And, um, my question to Mr. Cooper is, uh, before Ms. Kennedy, how do we receive those grants? I know that we kind of got those grants, did the department do those particular grants? I mean, so now we're giving all the grant writing for the, for the ride away, et cetera, to Ms. Kennedy now. Or, uh, I know Chester would come before us about a year, year ago and beyond and say, well, I got a grant soon, 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 and soon, and we want y'all to approve it. So now we just, he don't do that. Ms. Kennedy does it for us.
If we're working on a grant associated with roads, Chester will come before the board and present that, but we'll work in collaboration with Ms. Kennedy in reference to preparing the grant. And that goes for all departments. We're gonna identify grants that we're eligible for, and we're gonna work with her and her team in reference to those grants. And in the spirit of trust and transparency, we will come before the board.
And the reason why I said that, because I remember, and this was before you, Ms. Kennedy, um, our commissioners could put in for a grant, we had a grant writer, I think we paid about fifty thousand dollars a year for Newton County. Make a long story short, the only grant that we got was ten thousand, I mean a thousand dollars from Walmart, and I couldn't, I didn't got that myself. And so I guess my point I'm making it, if Chester is getting some grants and we're not paying anything at all for it, but I would, why shouldn't we continue to use them, to use Chester? And if Ms. Kennedy is gonna help us with some grants, then they'll for the ones that Mr. Chester is unable to maybe, maybe get for us.
Well, we need Chester because we need somebody from the department to give us the information to include in the grant. Chester knows about the projects. He can give us the data. You're right, Chester has gotten some grants on his own. Um, but I think Chester was really happy to have our help, to help with some of these grants, especially some of these Department of Transportation grants that can be really complicated and really long. So we reached out to Chester, told him what we needed. He got us that information, and then we put together the grant application. We gave it to Chester to review. If I'm not mistaken, I think we have a resolution in place already that allows us to write grants. We just have to come before you to accept them.
And you want your subject matter expert involved? So we're working in collaboration with the overseers of the grant, i.e., I parametrics in her team.
And you want her to write, uh, write, uh, Ms. Cooper. But the point is, if you, if you got somebody that's doing it, and I understand there may be a little bit of stress on Chester, but so was the road department manager before him. They did it too as well. And that was part of the job that they had was to go out and work with the DOT and other entities in order to get grants for our particular roads and et cetera. And so I'm just saying, we kind of changing it for whatever reason. Instead of, I can see we got a fifteen million dollar grant to do a road or something through Ms. Kennedy. But those simple grants that Chester had been getting, I didn't see no reason why he couldn't continue to do it. It, uh, it was no cost to the county, not even that four, what, four percent or whatever it is. Thank you, sir.
Two things, I'm gonna be quick. My suggestion is anything with ARPA, we need to put it at the end of the agenda. Make that the last thing that we have on the agenda so we can get through everything. That's my suggestion when you're putting the agenda together. But in regards to what Commissioner Henderson was saying was gonna be my question. Before Ms. Kennedy came on, she kind of helped with the SLAC. But we were looking for an in-house grant writer. The reason why they haven't bitten is because the salary was too low. So a grant writer, an average grant writer in, in the state of Georgia makes between sixty, seventy thousand. We had it out for like twenty-five, thirty thousand. And then we went up to like forty, forty-five. No grant writer, because I know many are not gonna buy it.
Quite frankly, that's an insult.
It is. It's complete insult. So that needs to go back out because we're gonna be spending more money, and it hasn't to do with Attorney Shannon, make your money. But we're gonna be spending more money on each individual grant versus having an in-house person, it's their job to constantly look for these grants, and that's what they do all day. Many counties have grant writers that do this. And I'm pretty sure Henry County had a grant, exactly, had a grant writer. And this is what's their job. But we're paying so much for consultants that it is costing us. And if you look at the, I'm pretty sure you looked at the list of consultants that we have here in Newton County, it is costing us tremendous money tremendously. So we have to figure out how to streamline our consulting, but we do need an in-house grant writer.
Point taken, Madam Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, so that's it? Thank you so much, appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Ham.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, item number nine.
I seek a motion that we approve of consent agenda, please. Can I get a second? It's a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Sanders, all in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda, we have two items back to back being presented by Mr. Greg Mann from our IT department. First item is number ten, Information System is requesting a... First item is number ten, Information Systems is requesting approval to renew the annual know-before cybersecurity training and testing program. The cost, twelve thousand four sixty-seven. Item number eleven is Information Systems is requesting approval to replace the WatchGuard Firewall hardware for the county firewall cluster with a three-year term of hardware and software support. That cost is thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars, and the funding source for that, actually, the funding source for both is our fiscal year twenty-four Information Systems budget, and it is budgeted.
Mr. Mann. Thank you for being here, sir.
Seeking approval, an agreement with know-before for our annual renewal for our cybersecurity attaining and trusting, testing program for our county employees. Uh, this has been in use since twenty nineteen. Um, it's been a real, real shot in the arm as far as our overall security posture.
Thank you, sir, I seek a motion, please. Motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason, end of discussion. All in favor? It passes five oh.
Thank you, item number two is the replacement of our, uh, firewall hardware for, uh, our firewall cluster with three-year term of hardware and software support. This is needed for additional security features and completion of our network segmentation project.
Thank you, sir, I seek a motion. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason, end of discussion. All in favor? It passes five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mann, um, before you leave, we wanna thank you so much. I know this is your last board meeting, uh, with us, and we thank you so much for your years that you've, uh, been here with us, uh, you're gonna be truly missed, so thank you so much, sir.
It's an honor to serve.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is actually items eleven A and eleven B, presented by Mr. Jeff Prime with Ascension Program Management. Um, there's a task order for RL Cousins, as well as a task order for our admin building, storage and maintenance building. These were the handouts that were provided.
Thank you, sir. Welcome tonight, sir.
Yes. So, um, this is the beginning of our Tier Two process for SPOLOX twenty-three, uh, and these are our first two projects. As you, as you already probably know, the accrual of SPOLOX twenty-three funds starts next month. So our goal is to get these first two projects, um, started by putting out RFPs and selecting our design builder for each of these particular projects. And then we'll be easing out the other Tier Two projects, um, later into the fall and early into next year.
Can I get a motion? Wow. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason, end of discussion. Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff, so, I mean, I know there was a, a couple of meetings that Commissioner Cowan and yourself, y'all had, had attended, so this first phase of it is to, um, I mean, what exactly were we doing, because I was planning on calling a meeting over at the TK Allen Building and inviting, uh, the public in to kinda give us some input as for us what they think or how the building should be, uh, renovated. So are we still looking at it being renovated, or are we looking at, or are we, are we still, the mess come back in with another two-story, two-story, uh, piece in it?
That, that's part of the process that we'll do once we bring on the design builder, to help us analyze that. So the goal is to work with the stakeholders, which include, uh, uh, obviously the RL Cousins Alumni Association. Uh, there are several entities already on campus like CASA, um, and others that we would engage as part of the process. And then, of course, as you've mentioned, and, and Mr. Cowan has mentioned, you know, a public process as well. So all those will be part of the process, we'll use to come up with a design and a priority of how we use the SPOLOX funds.
And correct, so I, I, I guess the, the question that we, that we asked, and, and I've kinda stated it a while back, it was that the RL Cousins project was, um, was presented to the SPOLOX committee as before it was approved by the citizens of Newton County. And they denied it, they said, well, no, we're not gonna, we, uh, we don't think that we're gonna spend any money on building a two-story, pushing down, pushing down most of it and build a two-story building in it. And so Commissioner Cowan and Commissioner Sanders and myself, and then the board chimed in on it, was that we added in, and I think we suggested we could only get eight million. And the idea was, was for, and I think I had written out, it's supposed to be in the minutes somewhere, so I, uh, I think we need to look at the minutes, when it was approved, that there was not gonna be a two-story piece of it at all. And I got the paperwork at home, and it was supposed to be a part of the minute, that it was supposed to be the renovation of it, make it nice, and that's what we voted on. And I think prior to this, uh, meeting here this evening, and this was you and I, we had talked about. Now, I understand the alumni, the Alumni Association, they are a group of people my age, and it's good. But I think that it's hard to spend nineteen million dollars, and you only got eight million dollars budgeted for it. Now, I don't think this, I don't even see why we're gonna get it, myself personally. So, my question is, is how we veered from what we had said we were gonna do from that board meeting here, ran the horseshoe to some what we have now? And lastly, you know, I'm a firm believer that if you're gonna do something, maybe it was, or still in my district, I'm not quite sure, it'd be back and forth between Commissioner Cowan and myself, and in the Afro-American community, at least it's, that should be a courtesy of the district commissioner being a part of that conversation, and I said that. So, I, I am for doing what we said we were gonna do, the eight million dollars, no more, no less, you know, and some people might be a little disapparent to me, but that nineteen million, we off, we off. Now, the suggestion was, when I heard, I wasn't at the meeting, was that they need to come up with a way for their back portion, I keep saying this, and maybe nobody's hearing me. The back portion, what we agreed on, where the DMV is at, which is gonna be moved somewhere else by the board, I think y'all have some good places, some ideas for it, that they could build up if their money was raised in order to do a two-story portion of it. And I explained it at the meeting, I think Commissioner Cowan was there, the meeting that we were together at, said this may be a way to be, now, I don't think, and I'm talking, uh, you know, we also, let me just, I'm gonna say this, we all said the same thing about, uh, about Nelson Heights. We wanted four million dollars to do a trail around it and do a football field. And the SPOLOX committee said, no, that was it, we didn't do that. Then it came back later and said, we'll give you a million dollars. So I'm just trying to figure out why, in this particular project, whereas the history of every black person who went to that school, alumni, myself included, all of a sudden, we're gonna do it with the black history in New, in Newton County, which the only thing left is RL Cousins School, we're just gonna push it down and do it with it, because some people want a new building. Build them something new at the, at the end of the other, of the property somewhere else, but don't tear down RL Cousins School. Don't move Costa, why are we moving Costa? We didn't put Costa over there, but Costa is a part of that particular building. The county employees over there, why are we gonna push them out and have a conversation with them when that was not discussed around its horseshoe? It was to renovate it, make it nice, do a nice entrance, put a stone out front commemorating where the, the people back in the sixty, I was a little bitty boy, who marched from Cousins all the way to the square, and then some at the backside of it for Alvin Turner, because I felt like, and that was me, I felt like he wasn't honored the way that he should have been honored, being a very good community leader in our community. So, that's what I had said, and so why are we bypassing what we had written down? I made a sheet, I put it on it before we vote on it, and I passed it around. So why are we all doing something totally different? And that's one of the things that, that, uh, I think we should start doing, is doing what we said we were gonna do, doing the way we voted. And so what I'm asking is, there's any plans of pushing down RL Cousins School and just leaving the front there so people pass by and say, that's the old school? The people that elected me said that they didn't want it. They select the alumni who wants to build them some, on the back end, or find some money to build them back in. We do not want that historic black school left in Newton County. But I tell you what you can do, go over there to, uh, to the plantation and push it down. That we need to do, just push it down, and that would stop a whole lot of stuff.
Thanks, sir. All in favor? Any opposed? We're voting on.
The change order or the task order for Ascension Program.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? Any, any opposed? I'm asking one more time, any opposed? Move forward? You opposed to it? It passes, if, it passes three, one. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is item number twelve, Human Resources Risk Management Purchasing is requesting approval to extend the contract of McGriff Insurance for Property and Casualty Insurance Services. Uh, the, the proposed price is seventy-eight thousand five hundred. We have Ms. Amanda Schumaker, our Director of Human Resources, as well as Risk Management Manager, Ms. Pamela Maxwell and team.
Hello, everyone. We are requesting a change in our property and casualty insurance services, and awarding a contract to the McGriff Insurance Services LLC for the county's brokerage services of our insurance products. In May of this year, the county advertised an RFP to solicit proposals for insurance services. A committee that included Brittany White, Jason Johnson, Pamela Maxwell, and myself evaluated each submittal, and, um, McGriff Brokerage Services was selected as the committee's choice based on qualifications and experiences, references, business ability, and cost. Um, you have a copy of the proposals, of their proposal, in your, um, booklets. Per the county's scope of services, McGriff was, has agreed to design a comprehensive insurance program for the county to include insurance coverages for our general liability, property, automobile, equipment, cyber, crime, and professional liability insurance products. McGriff has extensive public entity experiences and the ability to deal directly with insurance companies to negotiate coverages and pricing. Um, McGriff has provided us with a flat fee commission of seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars. This amount falls within the budgeted amount for FY twenty twenty-four. Upon approval, we will move forth with McGriff to finalize insurance quotes that will be presented to the Board of Commissioners no later than September, um, of this year for your consideration. Mr. Dean Hayes of McGriff, um, Insurance Services is with us tonight to introduce himself, as well as the McGriff team, and to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, thank you, Amanda. Uh, good evening to everybody, I know many of you, I'm Dean Hayes, I'm a lifelong, uh, member of this community here. I've been living in Newton County specifically for over twenty years. Been in the insurance business here since nineteen ninety-two, when Ronnie was still over at the city, I think. Uh, I was, went to work for Mr. Ben Banks here across the street from this office, and have been here ever since. Been a big change since then, uh, we've been purchased and, and we're now part of the, I'm part of the fourth largest insurance brokerage firm in the, in the country. Uh, I'm, uh, area managing executive director, um, for McGriff, uh, for South and East Georgia, and also have a significant book of business for commercial insurers in the Newton, Rotdale County areas as well. So, uh, we're excited about being your broker, if you guys will, uh, will allow it. We're excited that the RFP process, we were chosen. Um, I have with me my, uh, cohort in crime here, Bob Seville, who will function as a back office consultant. Uh, Bob does nothing but public entity, uh, municipal work, uh, has been doing that for, uh, over forty years exclusively, um, as an insurance agent and broker for, um, public entities and municipalities across the southeast. Um, do you have any questions about our proposal, or anything I can provide to you?
Thank you for being here tonight, sir. Guys, I seek a motion, please. Is there a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner, uh, Mason. End of discussions, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Ms. C. So, who, who would, if, uh, would be representing Newton County in this particular insurance proposal?
I, I'll be operating as the retail broker, um, and collectively with, uh, with our partner, Bob Seville, we'll be marketing the insurance policies, um, throughout the marketplace. Your renewal is ten-one, so we've got a pretty tight window, we need to get to work on it quickly. But basically, what this RFP process did, it was something called a broker bid, whereby your staff chooses a broker to represent you in the marketplace, and we have been in, uh, chosen for that. And that's what we're here hoping to get hired to do, to operate as your retail broker for their insurance program.
Any more discussion? Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Bob, it's good to see you again, after about, what, thirty years?
A while.
We were very young. Quick question, um, and I've, I've discussed this with some other folks. Would it behoove the Board of Commissioners to hire its own independent consultant to review? I mean, Stan, you are in the insurance business. I'm not in the insurance business, I'm a, an attorney. But, um, it would seem to me that the level of complexity with insurance, particularly along all the lines of, of, that we have, would best be suited by hiring an independent contractor that works directly for the board. No disrespect to you guys, but y'all guys get a commission off of...
No, sir, we won't be operating on a commission basis, it's strictly the, the fee.
Okay, but you get a fee? All right, um, based on what? Services provided?
Yeah, services provided and anticipated, it's usually figured on a percentage, eight percent or so of what they, your annual premium will be. That's kind of where you, you start out. We, we discounted our sum, because I have, um, we would like to see if we can help you guys with some of your risk management insurance problems, and being a Newton County resident, I wanted to, uh, add a little bit of more motivation, uh, on their account.
Okay. All right, um, I still think it would behoove us to have our own independent consultant. I think, uh, somebody that reports directly to this board and can review, not saying you guys are doing anything wrong, but just take a, a quick assessment of things and say, you need this, or you need that, or somebody that can discuss insurance with y'all.
Well, that's certainly, uh, Bob, feel free to chime in if you'd like to, that's certainly something that you could do, um, and it's not an uncommon situation. But I will tell you, in this particular situation, we are very, we're time pressed at the moment to get out to the market. So we, we really don't need to delay, and this is for you guys, you know, for, for, for your mere behalf, we don't need to delay this, you know, very much at all, because it's, uh, time is upon us.
Well, it would, it would be separate from y'all, it would be, we'd have to hire our own independent consultant, so we'd have to do an RFP for that. I just think that's something the board ought to consider.
Bob, do you want to share your thoughts?
And no disrespect to, to Bob, but I remember doing the fax machines in the back of the vans, you remember that?
We go back a long ways.
Getting into the markets.
Well, um, we've worked with independent consultants before. Hell, excludes, I had eye surgery, wasn't my wife. We've worked with them before, but as, as general rule, I, I was the, probably one of the first brokers in the public sector way back when. That's right, that, that's a good memory, and, um, forty years ago. And, and I've worked with almost every major, uh, county in the metro, fifteen county metro area. And I've advised them, I've worked with Fulton County with the schools and done broker bids for them and things like that. So, uh, I tend to step in for, uh, we, I've got about two hundred and fifty cities and counties I work with, and I step in and serve that role. And, and I also serve that role to the brokers as well, and independent agents, and just sort of advise them, because we've done so much, that, that we can almost look at the pol- we don't have to look up the paragraph in the policy, when you call up- When you call up, we can just answer it. And, uh, so our, our, that's my job, is to, to help you all feel comfortable with your coverage and know you're gonna get your claims paid, if it's covered. You know, and how, understand that coverage. So it's, uh, it, it's fortunate that I've been able to stay into the business this long.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah.
Wait, can I tell you, and I, I can call it, uh, Commissioner Cowan, that we, I believe, be our own independent broker. When I think about the fact that we don't have, um, that we're self-insured on most, most of our stuff, and please correct me, I'll chime in at any time, we're self-insured. And then if we have an accident, when the officer, police, officer count, we, we are liable, if I'm not mistaken, up to three-hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, somebody's coming to sign up people's papers, we pay off on the accident we may, might have. And I think it would behoove us, as a board, for us not to have a, somebody, um, that we trust in the independent broker spot to help us. Because I think we've been struggling over the past, uh, two or three years with our insurance. And it's time for to come, time for it to stop. We need somebody in place that's gonna work for us and make sure that we look at the whole picture, because I don't think that, it's not a whole lot of people, especially on this board. I think, uh, Commissioner Edwards sells some insurance, but maybe, and could be wrong, not to the level as for what we need as, as for the county. Uh, we need to be insured, we need to have somebody looking out for us. We need a independent broker. And I'm just gonna, gonna tell you, I, I looked at it and I said, you know, I'm, I'm just used to making, uh, making a, a motion, a substitute motion, and it failed, but I do it, because this is about our county. And I think that we need to have somebody local, like Mr. Gary Massey, to look out for our interest, interest, because he was, to my understanding, he was, he was born and raised here. He know the insurance business real good. We need somebody to help us out in these times of need. So I...
Have we made a motion yet, Patrick?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a substitute motion, that we make, uh, Mr. Gary Massey, uh, our independent broker on behalf of the county, that we'll mix in with, with these, um, with our insurance, so that we can have somebody local that we could go to on a daily basis, that we need to be, to check on our insurance.
A substitute motion been made, is there a second?
Can I, can I respond to that, please?
Hold on one second. Is this, is, is there a second on the floor? It's been motion by, it's been a substitute motion made by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion, Commissioner Edwards had his hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I don't, I don't believe that a decision to hire a, our own consultant and using McGriff to execute the, the purchase, the brokerage of our, um, property and casualty insurance are mutually exclusive. Uh, this, this decision, or this vote, uh, to, to have McGriff do this, um, should be an independent vote, and then the decision to hire a consultant, yes or no, should be another vote, uh, I believe altogether separate. So, um, I, I know, I know we've got a substitute motion on the floor now, but I, I would, I would suggest, my, my, in my personal opinion, we, we both vote on the, the McGriff decision first, and then the decision whether to use a, uh, an independent, uh, consultant for the, for the board at, in, in a separate vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Commissioner, um, Henderson?
Thank you, and it'd be brief, Mr. Chairman. It doesn't matter whether it's first or whether it's second. We need a consultant for us. Need to be first, looking out for us. That we need. That's why we're in the trouble that we're in now, for insurance commissioners. So, you know, let's do the right thing for our people.
Commissioner Edwards?
All right, so I want to understand, a substitute motion includes the approval of McGriff and Gary Massey as a, uh, Mr. Gary Massey as a consultant?
If that will make you happy, we could do that way. Mr. Massey would be the consultant for us, on behalf of us, along those, I would, um...
Okay, may I ask one more question, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Ms. Schumaker, last year I know we had a consulting fee and a brokerage fee that went to the same firm.
Yes.
Okay, this year is the brokerage fee deducted from what we're...
It's a flat fee of seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
So that was included, la, the brokerage fee and the consulting fee was included last year?
So, last year was separate. Last year there were a lot of different fees.
So it was more than seventy-eight thousand last year?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay, so, so we're not, we're, we're not, we're not here, if we, if we go with Commissioner Henderson's substitute motion, we have McGriff, and we hire a, an independent consultant. It's not additional money, it's, it's the same money we spent last year, basically. It's just...
Well, depending upon how much the consultant is. We don't have the fee for the consultant. But what McGriff is charging is a flat seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
And, and, and between, between the brokerage fee and the consultation fee last year, we spent how much?
Was it a mil... A hundred and twenty-five thousand.
What was it?
One twenty-five.
So you got four, approximately forty-eight thousand in consultation fees that is still, that we're, we're not spending tonight?
Yes.
Unless we, unless we accept Commissioner Henderson's substitute motion?
Yeah.
I believe, if we're going to do that, that fee has to be, that we, that fee has to be stated for, uh, the independent consultant.
We don't even know how much he charges us on our regular insurance. How you gonna... That's crazy. Nobody can tell, I'm just gonna say it, I'm gonna say it. Nobody can tell us right now how much Gary Massey make on our regular insurance. Nobody can tell us that. Nobody can te, and nobody in the county can tell us that.
No.
So, how are you gonna, I mean, you, you, you say they impossible. You can't say, hey, we're gonna put a limit on Gary Massey. We don't even know what he charge. We don't know what he charge. We hadn't talked to him, we don't know what he charge, unless you talk to him, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Stan is right. We, we can't identify an individual, uh, to award a contract to on something that can be bided out. So, my recommendation would be to adopt the, uh, McGriff Insurance and approve that, and then open up a opportu, if, if the board desires a opportunity to bid out, uh, consulting, insurance consulting services, and then whoever wants to get it can get it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That way, that'll give opportunity to talk to Mr. Massey.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody to talk to him anyway.
Yeah.
Can I?
Call for a vote on Mr. Henderson's motion?
Yeah, on his substitute motion?
Yes.
I'm calling for a vote, yes, I'm calling for a vote on Commissioner Henderson's substitute motion. All in favor? He want to, now, well, I give you, I tell you what, I give you a chance to redraw it, and then we can go back and, and then handle it the right way. Somebody can talk to Mr. Massey.
It's not about J.C. Henderson. It's about the trouble that we are in as a board for us, uh, for us, our insurance. And it's about us having somebody that we know to help us. And I'm pretty sure there's not a person on this board that may, who don't know Gary Massey and what, how he has helped us in our last insurance, uh, situation. So, you know, I can, I mean, if, if it, just, okay, call the motion, I'll vote for it. Y'all vote it down.
Okay. We're gonna call for the substitute motion, Commissioner Henderson's motion, uh, that, that included Gary Massey. Um, all in favor? All opposed? It failed. Thank you. Then we're gonna revert back to the motion that, um, Commissioner Edwards made, was to accept the proposal tonight. And, hold on, and Commissioner Mason, second in this discussion, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think, I want to encourage this board to keep in mind as well. Um, in the news recently, we have seen situations where boards have chosen to automatically award specific contracts to specific businesses or organizations, and now those elected officials that chose to go outside of the RFP process are now in legal jeopardy. And so we don't want to get ourselves in a position where we are going outside of that RFP process and just naming a specific individual about what we're going to do. Because that's gonna put this board at legal risk, and we don't want to do that at all. And so if we decide that we want to bring on an independent consultant, it would behoove us to put an RFP process out there, allow those individual, uh, consultants to submit through the RFP process, and a decision is made that way. If we get into the point where we are just selecting and awarding contracts to specific individuals, this board is gonna put themselves at a legal risk that we are not willing to take on. And so I think we need to just make sure that we're following, uh, our, uh, process uh, when it comes to selecting and awarding contracts, because we've seen the previous examples of other counties just here this year, recently, where this has become a problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Henderson?
Well, it's, to me, I'm not trying to make a debate. Just two months ago, we had Mr. Massey up here to help us with our insurance. Two months ago! And he went about, said, hey, we, we need to go bid it out. We need help. We called him in. He helped us to get us where we are today. Helped our, uh, human resource director too as well. I think he worked with Stan, and, and they talked about it, how we could make it better for us, Mr. Massey. It would just be moving him to a position where he could oversee the, what we're paying out and what we're getting back for our monies. And from what I've seen last time, we weren't getting too much back for our monies. What we got back was a big bill, and we still were just writing out blank checks. We just had a, um, something looked like an insurance, but, but it really was self-insured.
Commissioner Sanders?
Just a correction, because this is a public hearing. Um, that case with the other county was a little bit more strenuous. A lot of things were happening behind the scenes. Um, and Commissioner Mason is correct. We don't want to be doing things, because we already in that situation. But in regards to this, I agree with Commissioner Cowan that we do need someone to look after our well-being in regards to our insurance. Because, and I, I think we need to have somebody in-house. For my, my purpose, I, we have been consultant out here in Newton County. I mean, everything we do is a consultant, consultant, consultant. But if we have someone who's in place to be able to assist us, that knows the county and knows where it's going, I'm, I'm for it. But I do want to make correction. Nothing is done, has done, been done behind the scenes in regards to this vote.
Anybody else? All in favor? Any opposed?
It was to approve the bid to McGriff Insurance for Brokerage, Broker Services. It was just, just as, just as...
I'll call again, all in favor? Any opposed? It passed, I think, four, one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we put out for bids for an independent, um, consultant for, um, the Board of Commissioners regarding insurance.
You'll want to make, yeah, two motions. A motion to amend the agenda, to add that as an item, and then if that motion passed, the motion is considered.
Mm-hmm.
Are you making, are you making a motion?
Yes.
To amend the agenda?
Yes.
It's been a motion made by Commissioner Cowan to amend the agenda. Is there a second? He already stated...
So that I can add?
To do a RFP, uh, for, uh, consultant for the Newton County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? We'll amend that agenda, we'll make that item number seventeen-eight. Wow. It's him.
Mr. Chair, the next items on the agenda are...
Oh, timeout. You got, you got a...
I, I added, it's seventeen-eight.
Seventeen-eight?
Yes, sir. We're gonna bring Mr. Jeff Frye back up so he can finish his item eleven-B.
I got surgery at seven o'clock in the morning.
I got you.
I'm ready to get out of here.
Mr. Frye, go ahead, sir.
So the next tier-two project that we want to bring forward, uh, our task order, is for the administrative building renovation and also the centralized storage building and maintenance building. Um, there was, these projects go hand in hand with each other as we talked about in our process of putting them on the referendum.
I need a motion, please? Is there a second? There's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and a second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion?
Could you restate the motion, please?
You want to restate it, what you doing, sir?
It's basically to award the task quarter to Ascension Program Management to provide project management services for the SPOLOST twenty-three project, projects of the administration building renovation and centralized storage buildings.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, we're at item number, items number thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. These items will be presented by Mr. Chester Clegg, Transportation Director. Item number thirteen, Ms. Brittany White will accompany him with the Public Works Department. Thirteen is requesting approval to increase the total twenty-seventeen SPOLOST transportation budget to fully support planned projects cost three million. Fourteen is, uh, Public Works is requesting the Board of Commissioners to award the construction contract bid, number twenty-three, uh, to twenty-nine, to Pittman Construction Company. And then, of course, number fifteen is Public Works is requesting approval of the board of the project framework agreement with GDOT for the preliminary inju, engineering phase of the Fairview Road Multi-Use Path Project.
Thank you. Tonight, um, we are seeking an additional three million dollars of SPOLOST overage collections to be utilized for the transportation SPOLOST two thousand seventeen project. Um, I will speak on the number side of it. Chester can speak on the logistic sides of it, of why there are additional funds needed. So currently, the total SPOLOST estimated overage collections is around thirty-five million. We do have one additional month to still collect on the SPOLOST. Of that, the county receives seventy-five percent of that. The other twenty-five percent is dispersed out to the cities. So that leaves the county's overage collections to roughly an estimate of twenty-six million. And we have already allocated twenty-one million, so that leaves five remaining. So this request would utilize three million of the five million remaining.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we are, um, finishing up some of our projects... We are finishing up some of our projects that have been ongoing for years. And as you know, the prices, when we bid them out, the low bids are coming in a lot higher because of the economy and everything, inflation and all than we'd estimated. And one big item is the cost of asphalt. Our crews are doing the L-MIC projects, paving, resurfacing around the county. And we, asphalt has gone up almost sixty percent in the last two years, and that's a major part of the cost. And so trucking has gone up. So we're coming up short here at the end of our two thousand seventeen SPOLOST. And we're requesting three million, one point five million to make up the shortfall, and then the extra one and a half million to cover the resurfacing of Alcovee Road, which we have bid out but not awarded.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. The motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason, end of discussion? Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. Brittany, can you state again how much money is being left over in this SPOLOST you said? Because I thought we maxed it out, because I see it wasn't budgeted. This project, what I'm looking on here says budget no. So I thought we, because I know it's asking for additional increase?
Yeah, well, I did budget it because, I mean, it's technically, you know, not budgeted in the original SPOLOST allocation. So it's the same thing that we've come and we've done for Spring Hill Park, West Side Youth Facility, senior expansion, the E nine-one-one project. We're just asking to utilize overages. So the total county overage for the SPOLOST is going to be an estimated twenty-six million. We've already allocated twenty-one million of that out. So there's a remaining five. So if we utilize this, then there would be two remaining.
Commissioner Henderson.
This, it has nothing to do with this project, but I can remember last year at the end of, not this past budget, but the one before then, I think we made a, we made a motion that if there was any excess SPOLOST fund, that Commissioner Sanders, I think was. Am I, am I speaking?
That's the twenty-twenty-three SPOLOST. We voted for the twenty-twenty-three SPOLOST. Any overage goes to the District Three Park.
All in favor? Any, it passed five.
The next project is the same one I mentioned, that resurfaced Alcovee Road. And we received bids on that project on June twentieth, and the low bid was one point three seven million dollars by Pittman Construction. And we recommend that project be awarded to Pittman for one million three hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. It's a simple resurfacing from the city limits all the way out to Walton County.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. End of discussion? All in favor? Passed five oh.
The last request is a request to approve a project framework agreement with Georgia Department of Transportation to proceed with the engineering for the Fairview Road multi-use trail.
Seek a motion, please. Is there a second? It was motion by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Henderson, end of discussion? Commissioner Sanders?
Chester, can you provide a timeline of when everything will happen to go into fruition? I did have the opportunity to speak to the project manager from GDOT on this, so she kind of explained everything in detail to me and what's going on. But it was the timeline, because now it's in Newton County hands. So what's the timeline for what everything is?
Well, we get the project framework agreement done and start hire a engineer to do the design. I mean, it's two to five years. That's the best I can do on that. It's going to be a while before we start construction. And construction won't take long, it's just the preliminary engineering.
Engineering, okay. How long, you said the preliminary engineering takes? Two to five years?
Yes, this is the, GDOT's treating it like a road project. And so we're having to do all the environmental and all the time-consuming items, yeah.
All in favor? It passes five oh, thank you. Thank you, Chester.
Mr. Chair, we're at item number sixteen. Discussion of addendum to memorandum of understanding for the Newton County Family Connection.
Hello. So we are asking that you all entertain a motion to amend the memorandum of understanding that we have with Newton Family Connection for services to provide application support for all of the Newton County programs, specifically their senior home repair. We originally planned for three part-time employees to help, but the demand has been so overwhelming that we need eight part-time employees. And so some things have changed since we originally came to you for the MOU. One of the locations at the library wasn't available, so now Newton Family Connect are using their offices as one of the locations where individuals come and complete applications. Their offices are pretty older, some of the infrastructure of the offices are pretty older. So with all that increased traffic, they've had some issues with plumbing that they had to take care of that wasn't necessarily, would have been an expense had it not been for this. So they're asking to amend the MOU to allow for eight part-time employees instead of three. It will also include the expenses relative to it being at the Newton County facility as, the Newton County Family Connect facility as opposed to the library. I think it includes a monthly cleaning fee, because it's just these two ladies and they don't have anybody to clean the office, and they're entertaining multiple people every day for applicants. Part of the MOU would be the payroll, the payroll cost, any associated taxes that have to come out of payroll. So this is what we would amend the MOU to include. Instead of for three people, it will be included for eight people. And I think included in the MOU was an expense for five hundred and something dollars to repair the toilets, because they've been, increased people have been using the toilets over and over again, and they're old, and the rubber things need to be replaced. So I have Laura here, if you have any questions, because she's been the feet on the ground for this, she knows what the demand is. But I think what she asked, what she's asking for is more than reasonable, considering the eight hundred and fifty-five registrations we have in the system and the number of applications for senior home repair. And we want to make sure that there are resources available for our seniors to submit applications.
Thank you. I seek a motion, please.
So both. Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Mason, end of discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. If, if what I'm hearing, and I think we, the board has voted for Aric cousin school and this part of office for Aric cousin school, then there are plans are being made to possibly push it down and do a two-story building in the middle. What that would mean, that Costa would be gone, and I'm not sure where your office would be at, and so would countless of county employees that have been placed there. So if that's been, if that's the mindset, then you would be taking money and throwing away because you're going to push it down and do a two-story building over there. From the plan that, from my understanding, is this what's happening, doing with the history, at least a little black history that we have for Juneteenth Day, Black History Month, pushing it all down for Newton County. So, I mean, you're taking money and throwing it away if you're going to do that, if that's the board intention.
My question is, this is county property, so I don't think she would have to put that in her budget, right? Aren't the county supposed to redo the maintenance of the facility?
Actually, I think I can maybe answer that. When this building was started, when I started working with this building, and actually nineteen ninety-eight to open it up again, it was actually managed by a nonprofit volunteer board of directors. And we served, we got no money to, as Family Connection, but because we were the first group that came in to stay in that building, we were kind of the, like, de facto managers of it. And if you've ever seen my house, you would not want me to be your contractor. However, what's happened is, is that when, while as long as the nonprofit board was there, they paid for any repairs that had to go on. And one of the things that the counties asked, when the county, and you guys can challenge me, but, was that anyone that wasn't a county organization would be eventually responsible for their own upkeep and everything. And they allowed the Family Connection to stay there as long as we did the repairs that were necessary within our own organization. So we have maintained, not greatly, but we have maintained that there are four toilets in there, and they only used by two people. So when we had about thirty people coming in a day, all of the crumbling rubber, so we did, we did repair them, and that's all we're asking for a replacement for. The air conditioners, there are two air conditioners that don't work, and because the county's looking at SPOLOST to renovate that area, that we, we think that we can do fine with, with the three that are left. So we're not asking for a lot of money, but it is not the county's responsibility to pay for our stuff.
Okay. So I, that's, I'm glad, I didn't know we didn't maintain it. And the other question that I had was, is there, because I got this question from constituents. They noticed that there's not a location that's closer to the west side of Newton County. Is, is there a location that's closer?
There was, there was a, we were at the Porter Library, which is on Highway two twelve, and that is only open three days a week, one of those days being Sunday, for about five hours, four hours. And so we were there Monday and Tuesday, and had such low traffic that to pay people the ten thirty, eleven thirty, twelve thirty, one thirty, two thirty, to three, for those four and a half hours, would cost more than it did to have them working, because we're having at the administration building. And it doesn't matter where they live on the west side, they are coming to the administration building and to Cousins Center. And the administration building is doing roughly forty people a day going through there. So that is where our biggest push and need for of this, of these staff. We have three on a regular basis at the offices, and that's including Molly and me working there. And then I've been recently going over this past week to the county admin building, so we have five there.
All right, Commissioner Cowan?
Okay, and I'm not too worried about y'all. I wanted to clear up the issue of a two-story building at Cousins. The last meeting I was at, that idea was scrapped. And the only wing that they considered tearing down was the back wing, which has the mold and sewer problems. They thought about tearing that down, but all the rest of it, they wanted to continue to keep the integrity of the building. So I wanted to make sure that you knew that.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Add one or two questions. The first, first one to the county attorney, Patrick. Once the county purchased that particular building, that's a county building, and we are responsible for the upkeep? Because we, look here, if that been the case, we had more people shooting movies over there. And I know, because I came in and said, what's going on? They're shooting movies. So you, we had some people shooting movies over Aric cousin, and you mean tell me those are the type of sanitary conditions that they were brought into? And I understand what they had said, I think it was Randy Vincent and that group, I remember also aware, because we leased it from, from them as part of the county for years. Aric cousin then found, the board saw fit to purchase that, that particular piece of property. And what I thought then was for his historic value for the community. And what that was for the community was to be sure that we will remember, this is my take, from where we came from, from an old school that was all Afro-Americans, childrens, who are now old folks now, so that we won't forget where we came from, and hopefully the younger generation will know kind of where they might be going. So that's the county's responsibility to fix that, is, we shouldn't be budgeting money, that's a county building. Now, I heard you, Commissioner Cowan, you've been an advocate for that building, you know, we talked about it. But, well, you listened to Jeff Prime a few minutes ago, and he said he was going to revise that plan that you all had. So maybe you wasn't listening, I was. And to revise that plan was to put Costa out, you out, and several other county entities that we had in that particular building, to put them out so you could build a, push down the middle part of it and build a two-story building, which I was said then, we told against. Then I came before the board, and we put it back on the SPOLOST list, this board did, on to have regress back to the same thing. That's what I'm saying, I don't think that's right for you, for the people who's over there, such as yourself and all others, and to the community at large, because that's not what they wanted. And I have never known for about ten peoples, and I said, if they were here, ten people can tell the entire county how they want a building to be do of historic value. That's why I asked for a community meeting for the people who maybe care a little about that building, same way they care about the one over in District One, the old school over there. Looks good, renovated, because I go over there sometimes. And in our other places. Please, we want to do fixed up and to reflect on the hard times, as these not so good times, but it's better than the old times.
Yes, sir.
And so that's where we were at, that's where I was at. So I guess to question you, Mr. Patrick, our county attorney, wouldn't it, would it be the county's responsibility to do repairs in that building, since you, people's over there in a county building that we paid for living conditions that it shouldn't be being over there in?
I would agree that unless we have entered into some contract where an occupant has accepted that responsibility, that responsibility is the county's.
I have.
There's no contract.
We had accepted that for the.
There's no contract. That may be something that we thought was, but there's no contract on none of this stuff over there. If you're people just placed over there. There's no contract. You need to fix it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? I already don't call for the motion, sir.
I, I believe Costa's being helped, and I know the state DJJ is being helped, and so is that D wing. And those are the only others up there. I mean, yeah.
Hold on one second, I already called for the motion.
Oh, sorry.
I already had called, I mean, I already called for the, the vote.
So part of this is that she's already paid five hundred and some dollars to the tour, but she's just asking for reimbursement in the MOU.
No, 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 we, no, the motion have, has already been called, the vote has already been called for. You can vote it up or vote it down, I'll call for it again, all in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? Thank you, it passes.
Okay, one last, I have one last update, so you're all set.
Three, one, and one commissioner decided not to vote. That's, that's your fault. If you don't want to raise your hand, thank you.
It's not my fault, Mr. Chairman, you didn't get an accurate vote, so you don't know what I voted for, for or against, or the same.
I called for the vote.
That's parliamentary procedure.
I called for the vote.
Yeah, you called for the vote, but you didn't get a vote from the commissioners.
If you want to sit over there and not vote, you can sit over there and not vote.
No, I asked a question, as a commissioner, I have a right to ask a question about a vote, that's parliamentary procedure. Okay, and you keep being the chairman like that, the way you are.
Let's move forward.
And that's why you're in that position.
Just one more point, from what we discussed earlier.
That's what it sound like, you need to run for chairman. Yeah, yeah, that's what you need to do. Go ahead.
So I just wanted to reiterate earlier, we increased the total allocation of programming from eight million to ten million. That has contracts implications for IPa metrics. That will increase our fee by two hundred thousand dollars. I just wanted to make you all aware of that. The last contract we signed said it would be a ten percent for any additional money added on top of the eight million. We had eight million originally, you just added two million, so that makes it ten million total, so that will increase the IPa metrics fee by two hundred thousand dollars, according to the contract we just had. I just wanted to make you all aware of that. Now, us moving money from category to category doesn't change the fee, because that's still included in eight, but when you take money out of the pot and add it to the eight, then we take ten percent of whatever you add as the administration fee. Are there any questions regarding that? That's already in the contract, so I don't even know if we need a motion for it or not.
Commissioner Henderson?
The question, did I?
The question, did I, uh, I was thinking about, help me, please, understand this. I was thinking about, uh, we moved what was two million dollars from one category for, for, uh, for something else to the seniors.
Mm-hmm. I'm not, but we don't charge you for that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we're at item number seventeen, Newton County travel policy and procedures revision. We have, uh, our county manager, Mr. Harold Cooper, along with our finance director, Ms. Brittany White.
Ms. Cooper.
Thank you, sir. In reference to the policy revisions, there are two changes that I want us to pay close attention to. Before we talk about that, I wanna talk about the reason why, right? Third P, you know, is the process. So, in terms of direct oversight as it pertains travel and training, from an operation standpoint, I should have direct oversight over there. But in terms of our elected officials, that's where it gets a little quirky, for lack of a better term. Because from a consistency standpoint, our finance department has, you know, had, for lack of a better term, and Brittany can speak for herself, some anxiety about some of the inconsistencies associated with the travel and training of elected officials. So, as a result of this, we asked Patrick to assist us with making some simple revisions. And those revisions are really highlighted in Section Two, the statement of policy, uh, Section A, reimbursement travel, and Section B, reimbursement travel, where he put a caveat in there about the board of commissioners. So, I'm gonna let, yield to Patrick and let him speak to that caveat at this time.
So, the primary changes to the policy as you see it from the prior policy is, is really, it was designed to address the problem that Harold just, just made. So, your staff, being Brittany or Harold, should not be in the position of approving or rejecting the travel requests that come from a member of the board of commissioners. So, if you will look at the last paragraph in Section A, it's Section Two A. It's actually on the very top of the second page of the policy. And this, this is repeated everywhere that, where there's a request for reimbursement by a member of the board of commissioners. And what it says, and this is repeated throughout, for members of the board of commissioners, the county will reimburse an individual for expenses incurred in travel as approved in advance, either by the chairman of the board of commissioners or by a majority vote of the board of commissioners. So, if a commissioner wants to engage in travel funded by the county, and that would include, you know, that includes your airfare and your hotel and your surface transportation and all of that, the request goes to the chair. If you, if you are dissatisfied with the chair's response, then you can ask the entire board to take it up. And that way, you're taking your finance director out of the decision-making process, you're taking your county manager out of the decision-making process, you're taking the county clerk out of the decision-making process. It's your decision. And so, that is repeated in multiple sections of this agreement, everywhere where it talks about the type of expense you would be reimbursed for. Now, members of the board of commissioners would remain subject to the monetary limits. The, the, uh, all of the technical things that are included within here about, you know, seeking the most economical rate of travel. Uh, you know, you don't fly first class on the county's dime, things like that. Um, and it's repeated likewise for, you know, for lodging in your per diems and all of those things. So, that's the change as impacts the members of the board of commissioners. As impacts staff, for the most part, the policy remains the same. It just, it, the policy puts the burden on the county manager to approve all of the requests for travel. Before, the, the approval seemed to be department head, kind of sometimes, county manager sometimes. So, now, all the travel requests for staff have to be approved by the county manager. So, that's the primary revision that was made to this policy. It updated, updates mileage and things like that, some of the IRS reimbursements as well.
Let's get a motion on the floor. Get a motion, please.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Cowan, end of discussion, Commissioner Sanders.
Yes, um, I had asked for an actual copy, cause he just said it was highlighted, but the copy that we received was not highlighted of the changes. And normally when we receive policy change, cause it's a thirty-plus page document. And normally when we receive policy changes, it'll show us exactly what was changed. But it was not highlighted, and I asked for it and nobody had, I asked for it two days ago. And nobody has sent it to me, cause I wanted to see actually what was changed before I actually vote on it. The only way you can see that, if you put the old documents side by side and go line by line. I mean, but Patrick did state some things, but geez, it's not telling us exactly where, line by line, what has been changed. It's like he just said, there's some other updates, like what? See, that, that's the only issue I have, is that we're receiving a document that's already in effect and we're trying to change a policy. But the commissioners are not seeing exactly or highlight, like you mentioned, what has been changed. My other question is probably to Patrick, how does that go against the enabling legislation? Where it says that commissioners are supposed to be reimbursed for all travel regardless? So, that's in our enabling legislation, it's listed there in the document that's, that was approved by the state. So, I, that's the question I'll have, that's one of the questions, I don't know if you wanna write it down. Um, the second one is, who approves the individuals who are approving the other items? Because in our county manager's contract under Section Nine, general expenses, it says all expenses must be pre-approved by the board of commissioners. So, how does that change? Who approving that? Cause since I've been here and it hasn't to do with Mr. Cooper, but since I've been in place, a county manager has never come before the board of commissioners and asked for their travel to be approved. And that's the contract the board approved when he came in office, when he came in his position. So, how is that going against this policy? So, that's the other thing that I have in place. And also, what items, cause I wanna know what the inconsistencies are on why this is being changed in regards to what is the reasoning? Can, can you mention what the inconsistencies are as well? So, I'll let Patrick, uh, speak on his two, and I would love to know what those inconsistencies are, so we can put that on record.
Yes, so I'll address the comparison or the, or how this works with the enabling legislation. The enabling legislation provides that commissioners are reimbursed for their travel on behalf of the county, and this fills in the blank as to when that travel is authorized. The enabling legislation doesn't authorize a commissioner to just travel at his or her decision and claim it as a county expense. So, what this does is ensures that you are reimbursed, but establishes a procedure to make a determination as to whether that travel is or is not on behalf of the county. That's how it melds with the enabling legislation. As far as the county manager's traveling expenses, you're absolutely right. This policy does not address how the county manager's travel expenses are incurred, it addresses the people that work for the county manager. You, as a board, must approve the county manager's travel expenses. If they've, if it's not been done in the past, it needs to be done.
It definitely does.
So, and I agree with you one hundred percent.
So, my question is, I think, and make, and correct me if I'm wrong, I heard that the approval of the, just, is it just the staff? Or the elected officials are being approved by the county manager and the chair? Is that was the change?
Staff is approved by the county manager.
Okay.
Commissioners are approved either by the chair or the board.
Is that the new change you put in there?
That's the, the second part.
So, the question would be is, who approves the chair's travel?
I would say that should go to the board, yeah.
So, that needs to be written?
Yeah, I think that's a good, that's a good.
So, that needs to be amended and written in the document. I'm, I'm, when I make them, uh, I would like to do a substitute motion that, with that travel document, that the chair's travel has to be approved by the board of commissioners. Along with the document that includes in regards to the county managers, has to come before the board of commissioners.
Yeah.
Which is already written, it's already written, you guys already voted for that when you made him county manager. Um, so, so, and Brittany, my question was, what were the inconsistencies that you had?
Um, pretty much what Patrick said is to cover exactly what travel would be allowed. Um, like he said, you don't want commissioners traveling to everything and every, you know, they can go to. So, clarification on conferences that are allowed, and then also clarification on who is, cause everything that flows through my office needs an approval. So, I need an approval on reimbursements, I need an approval on mileage, and there's not been a clear answer on who approves the board's travel. And so, I wanted to seek clarity in that.
So, what document will be constructed that says what is considered travel? Cause I'm, I'm, I don't know of any commissioner here that has traveled, I mean, out of the way besides the conferences that we've had. I don't know any, and mine were majorly paid by scholarship last year, so that I, I barely really use the county budget. So, oh yeah, mine, oh yeah, mine was paid for by scholarships. NACO paid for majority of my stuff and Local Progress paid for majority of my items. Only, only NACO paid for was AC, on A, uh, only thing the county paid for was ACCG and for NACO in Washington DC and Austin, Texas. Everything else when I travel, and Brittany, you do have that, we get reimbursed from the NACO trips I've taken, cause you had to send back the reimbursement forms, they were all paid for by NACO and Local Comp and, and Progress. So, in regards to that, what is gonna be the list of the items that, that states what consists of what the board is supposed to travel to and cannot travel to? And also in there needs to be, is saying, cause that was the issue when I first came on the board. I was told this commissioner can only travel, but that's discriminatory. So, how are we gonna actually put that in place to say that only one commissioner can go to this event and the other one can't? Or if all five wanna go, how is that gonna be determined?
Yeah, so, we did not make an effort to say in this policy, who gets to go to what? Because that's problematic.
That's discriminatory.
That's problematic.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know which conferences the board considers beneficial for a board member to go to. And that's not my decision to make, it's not Brittany's decision to make, it's the board's decision to make. Y'all collectively should decide whether a commissioner should, should travel to an educational conference in South Carolina. I shouldn't decide it, Brittany shouldn't decide it. And we don't know the universe of training opportunities and travel opportunities. So, I, I guarantee if I were, if we were to list a hundred in our policy, the hundred and first training opportunity is gonna come up and we're gonna be back where we were, where nobody knows whether, Brittany's not gonna know, do I approve it and pay or do I not approve it and pay? So, the way this agreement contemplates the procedure works is, a commissioner has a travel, training opportunity. I don't think it require, I don't think Brittany requires any specific form. Maybe an exchange of emails with the chair, the chair says approved, that's sufficient for Brittany to make the res, the reimbursement. If it's not approved by the chair, if the chair doesn't wanna mess with it, and it comes to the board, then the board would vote on it and there would be official action authorizing it to be done. Yeah, so, we, we wanted to leave, I didn't wanna exclude any, I, I, I was not going to undertake an effort to identify every possible thing you may go get training. I mean, in my mind, if you're gonna go to ACCG to get your commissioner certification, absolutely, county ought to reimburse you for that. I mean, to me, there's no question about that. But if you're gonna travel to Arizona for a, you know, some third-tier county commissioner organization that maybe is offering some training on something, I, I don't know, but y'all should, that decision should rest with y'all. Y'all are the ones that should be accountable to how you allow each other to travel.
Thank you. And I encourage every resident citizen of Newton County to do an open records on travel and any expenses of all officials.
All in favor? It passes five votes, thank you. Seventeen A, Mr. Cowan.
Okay, I want to, uh, make a motion to, um, put out for bids for a independent, uh, insurance consultant to report directly to the board of commissioners.
Um, it's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan, second by Commissioner Henderson. He made a, um, a motion to, um.
Put out an RFP for an insurance consultant to report directly to the board of commissioners.
Yeah.
All in favor? I'm sorry, discussion, I'm sorry, discussion, discussion, discussion. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, I just wanna add, um, before we vote, um, did the board actually take into consideration what the expense is going to be for that? I know we were just talking about that there's only about forty-six thousand dollars left in comparison to last year and what we paid this year. Um, do we know if whoever is chosen as the consultant, uh, are they willing to accept the forty-six thousand dollars? Um, or is that expense going to be more than forty-six thousand dollars, which is gonna exceed what we've already paid in prior years? So, is this something that we, as a board, would want to vote on right now with so many unknowns? Not knowing who that consultant would be, not knowing what that consultant's, uh, cost will be? So, there are some unknowns that we don't know at this particular point, uh, to really be able to make a excellent business decision on whether or not this is something that we wanna do, because we don't have those unknowns in place? Or we don't have those knowns in place, should I say? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm, Commissioner Cowan, go ahead.
I think we're just asking for bids. It's like you, you go out here and you roof your house, you get a bid on your house. Uh, I don't know what the cost would be, I don't even know how to value that, but obviously somebody in the business does. Uh, it's worth looking at, you can always accept or reject any, any all bids. So, that's the, that's the thing, is, is, you know, do we get something back that's meets our expectations? Or do we get it back and it's just, it's too high and we just say, we're not gonna do that? Maybe it's something we do.
If I could add, I know it looks like there's more questions, but also, it, this won't really be a bid, it'll be proposals. So, it'll be a request for proposal where the person submitting the request will say, here's what I propose to do for you, here's my qualifications, here's what I'll charge. And like every other, every other RFP, your staff will vet it and present to you the, you know, and, and if it's too much, you, you're under no obligation to award it. But I will tell you, and I, I'm maybe speaking for Brittany, I don't want to, but it may have to be accompanied, to your point, it may have to be accompanied by some budget action, because I don't know that you have a budget category for this. So, that will come back to you, you're not committing yourself to do anything, you're committing yourself to find out what's out there and have people make proposals to you.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, uh, my suggestion is we table this for thirty days because we don't know what the requirements of that position would be at this point. And we've got to give some guidance and have some dialogue with the Schubackers Department, uh, before we even, uh, we don't know what we're asking for, basically.
Are you making, are you making that in the form of a motion?
I'd like to make a substitute motion, we table this for a period of thirty days, um, so that we can understand what, what, what an RFP will require, what those requirements would be of that position. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a substitute motion being made by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason? That we table this for a period of thirty days? End of discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Our motion failed, we revert back to the original motion. Um, all in favor? Passes five votes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we're at number eighteen, the al.
Go ahead.
The alcohol beverage license, number eighteen, is our first reading for Venture Management, District Two. Venture Management is at one four six five six Brown Ridge Road in Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six. The applicant is Yusef Alanmudan, alcohol license for off-premises consumption app, application.
That's the first reading.
Yes, sir. The next item is item number nineteen, it's also the first reading for Fox Vineyard Inc., District One, located at two twenty-five Highway eleven South, Social Circle, Georgia, three zero zero two five. The applicant is Kenneth R. Fuchs, alcohol license for off-premises consumption application. We have item number twenty, which is also the first reading for TMN Enterprises, World of Wings, fifty-three fifty, Highway twenty South, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six, this is District Two. The applicant is Mr. Christopher Thomas, on-premises consumption license application.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next on the agenda is citizens' comments. This opportunity, we allow citizens to make comments. This opportunity, we allow citizens to make comments. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please come and state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone want to make comments tonight?
Good evening again. I didn't get a chance the first time, but I want to ask the question now. When are you all going to vote for county attorney? One of the things is, since, since you've been at this firm, I think you've paid out so much money, and if you look back on the previous attorney, that we never had as many lawsuits and everything, the county have paid out so much money for nothing, because I don't see anything, but you're just paying out money for nothing, because you could get someone. I know if y'all paid enough money, if you paid as much money to get an in-house attorney, you can get somebody to take this job. There's no, there's no, it, it, it's, it, it's just not possible for someone not to take the job. So, you don't have a contract, I don't think. It's time to, time to try to make some changes. And the other thing, I've been in this county all of my life, and I want to say this, this is the most dysfunctional vote that I have ever seen. I mean, you don't need the three, or three commissioners, because three commissioners is running the county. They're not concerned about what the people put them in there for. Three commissioners is running this county, and it's time for a change. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Mason. Commissioner Mason, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one brief announcement. I've scheduled our next back-to-school movie in the park on July the twenty-eighth. That is a free community event. It will take place at Denny Dobbs Park, sixty-two forty-four Highway two twelve north, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six. The event begins at seven o'clock PM, and the movie will start at dark. Bring your lawn chair, your blanket, and join myself, along with friends, family, and other District Two residents, surrounding county residents, to join us for our back-to-school movie in the park. We're going to be watching Sonic Two. So we are excited about watching that movie, so we're going to have a great back-to-school event. So I wanted to invite everybody out to that back-to-school movie in the park on July, Friday, July the twenty-eighth, beginning at seven o'clock PM. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to first announce, I'm honored to be asked to be on at Naco, one of the panels for the GIS board. They asked me to represent as an elected official on how we, as elected officials, our constituents utilize maps and GIS, and, and we just actually rolled out, notified Newton, so I was honored to be asked to do that by that committee, to be on that panel with Naco, and you can also see it on Naco's website as well. October sixth and seventh is, again, is our third annual Newton County Ladies Retreat. I am honored for the amount of women that wanted to be on a committee to make expanded and to reach our youth. This year, I reached more of our young ladies this year, so that's why they added on October sixth. So I'm excited about this third annual. Last year, we had an amazing time. Over a hundred and fifty-plus ladies attended the event, and it was an awesome time, and this year they want to do a ladies prom. So, and some of the organizations are going to be donating prom dresses to the young ladies, so they can come and look fabulous, and so this is a, a, an idea that I came up with years ago, and I thank those residents who came along, because you can't do anything by yourself, so I'm excited about that, and I want to thank those ladies that listened to the sound of my voice in regards to that. So thank you so much. I just want to make one statement. In regards to we as elected officials, I've been hearing around the county, and I'm going to put this out there, we're not going to vote for anything that Commissioner Sanders has in her district. I've been hearing that from residents who said they spoke to certain commissioners and various things. This is what came to me. What has been said are true, that's what came to me, that they've spoken to certain individuals, that whatever Commissioner Sanders put out, we're going to vote against. Now, I'm going to say this, if it's allegedly stated, we as elected officials took a sworn oath, it's not about Commissioner Sanders. Yes, I'm a fight tooth and nail for my community. That's why I fought so hard for that youth commission, which ironically, the first meeting is when we're in at Naco, but I'm glad it's in place. But voting for something against me, it don't hurt me, everyone. It hurts the residents that I represent and the children that I represent. It don't hurt me. I've said this many times, my child in her second year in college, I don't have, need a park, I don't need a swing, I don't have to have all that. I have no dog in the fight. The dog in the fight I have is, I was put in place to represent a community, and this is what they wanted. So when you vote against something from me, remember, you're voting against this community not having it, the seniors, the community, and so forth, and they watching it. They see what's going on. So it's not voting against Alana Sanders, you're voting against the residents of Newton County. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you. You know, I, I've never been so disrespected as a district commissioner than I have been, I think, this year. Each of us has a district that we were elected from, and I've always voted, no matter whom the commissioner is. I thought that he or she, you know, was best for their community, and I have supported them in every effort. And give a quick example of, about the fire station in District One, Stan's District. Unbudgeted, I supported it. And for them not to even want to have a meeting with me concerning about our cousin's school, I think that's, that's kind of disrespecting for other board to even just look past what I was talking about. And I was the only one after the fire committee turned them down, I was the only commissioner who talked with Commissioner Sanders, Commissioner Cowan, and everybody was chiming in on it, which they were good, that said that we're going to, eight million dollars to restore it, and for them to come back and change back to the same old ways and want to push it down, get rid of Costa, get rid of county, uh, people who are over there, staff over there, that's really a disservice to our community. We just want to put the people on it, which restore the building, make it nice, make sure the toys work, and so that we have someone to reflect on how it used to be, but how much better it is now. And so, but we not getting there. You know, we've gone back to the same old, same old. But I'm going to fight. I'm going to fight to the end to keep that history in Newton County. They're not going to push it out. And the problem is, we bring in people who don't care about Newton County, and they're voting for anything, and that's not right. That's not right. Let's do it with their plantation. They'll be restored in the right direction. Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, sir. Now, I seek a motion that we adjourn. Is there a second? There's a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Sanders. All in favor? It passes, passes four votes. Thank you.